Good evening, everyone. The Board of Education reconvened into open session at 5:04 PM. Row call, please.
Isabella Carbio, student board member, present.
Rhodes Williams, present.
Cleveland Johnson, present.
Joanna Leva, present.
Brandy Clark, present.
Sammy Luna, present.
Alejandro Valcava, present.
Esperanza R.C., present.
Robert Verdi, present.
Susanna Lopez, present.
The Board of Education met in closed session to discuss four deliberations regarding public employee discipline dismissal, release, and non-relection. A conference with a labor negotiator, a conference with a legal counsel regarding existing litigation, a conference with a legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, and settlement of claims. The Board gave further directions to district staff and took action on the following. A motion was made by Ms. Clark and seconded by Ms. Leva and approved settlement claim number 635418. This vote was approved by the Board of Education by the following vote: five yes and zero no. Sammy Luna, yes. Brandy Clark, yes. Joanna Leva, yes. Cleveland Johnson, yes. And Rhodes Williams, yes. Now, we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Carbio?
Thank you. Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Carbio. Next is our land acknowledgement. The Moreno Valley Unified School District acknowledges that our schools and district sites are situated on the ancestral homelands and traditional territories of indigenous peoples, including the Kowia, the Gabarilino-Tangva, the Luiseño, and the Serrano. We honor their connection to this region and sincerely appreciate the opportunity to educate our students on their traditional homeland. Their continued presence, resilience, and vital contributions remind us of our responsibility to honor and care for this land and its people. Next, we are on to item three. Organization of the Board of Education. Three A is election of the president. I would like to make a motion to nominate Ms. Brandy Clark for president.
I'll second.
Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote. Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Leva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, President Clark. Next is item three B, election of vice president. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ms. Sammy Luna as vice president of the Board of Education.
Thank you. I'll second that. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote. Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Leva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, three C, election of clerk?
No applause?
Oh! Sorry, I forgot to applaud myself.
You're amazing.
Next, election of clerk. Do I have a motion? There's a motion for Mr. Rhodes Williams for clerk. Mr. Rhodes Williams, do you accept that nomination? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Clark seconds. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote. Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Leva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Williams. Just for the audience awareness, this will take effect next month, or next year, next month, January. Right? Oh, it takes place right now?
Yeah, we do the dance of the musical chairs.
Okay, so we're gonna, are we gonna go ahead and do that? Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess so we can reorganize ourselves.
14 PM. Next on the agenda, we have item E4. The 2025 Board Representative as Delegate to the Annual Meeting of the Riverside County Committee on School District Organization was delegated to Sammy Luna. So, for clarity, Claudia, do we nominate a new delegate, or do we hold?
President Clark, you can renominate Ms. Luna, or you can choose another delegate to represent for the county.
Can I have a consensus? Would you guys like to say with Sammy Luna, or nominate another delegate? Would you like to be the delegate, Ms. Luna?
If anyone is interested, I don't mind you taking over, but I can, I am more than happy to do it as well. I would also like to offer you all the opportunity if anyone wants to do it.
Can I get a motion?
Ms. Leva, looks like she's thinking about it, though.
So can I have a motion? I'll second.
Please call for the vote. Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Ms. Leva?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
This motion is passed. Six, zero. Moving on to E5. We are calling for the nominations and appointment of, for California School Board Association CSBA Delegate Assembly. The ones in red are up for reelection. And does anyone want to make a motion to nominate two of the seven nominees?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Ben Johnson II. And, do I do two, or just one at a time?
Two.
Two?
Yes.
And Melissa Williamson.
I believe we could nominate up to seven.
Oh, seven on one motion? Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, is that, is that the amount that's up? One, two, three, four, five, six.
There are nine up, eight in, in Region 18, and one in Subregion 18A.
Okay. Okay, let me, let me try this again. Okay. I would like to nominate Ben Johnson II, Heidi Matthews Dodd. I'm picking out the names I know first. Amanda Vickers, Melissa Williamson, Jasmine Rubio, Linda Porras, Cynthia Navarro.
I'll second. I'll second.
Please call for the vote.
Thank you.
Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Ms. Leva?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye. The motion carries, six, zero. Now, we're moving on to item E6, Approval of the 2026 Proposed Governing Board Meeting Dates. Please review your dates, trustees, to ensure that you agree, and once agreed, can I have a motion?
I'm busy on November, no, I'm just kidding. I would like to make a motion to approve 2026 meeting dates and times.
I'll second.
Claudia, please call for the vote. Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Ms. Leva?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye. This motion carries, six, zero. Moving on to item E7, Approval Policies, Regulations, Procedures, and Resolution of the District. Um, can I get a motion, please?
Sure, move.
Can I get a second? I'll second. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Ms. Leva?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye. This motion carries, six, zero. Now, moving on to E8, the school report. Ms. Isabella Carbio?
Thank you. I would like to call up Serenity Mosby from March Mountain to give the school report.
Good evening, Board President, our newly-elected Brandy Clark, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Wakaba. Thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of March Mountain High School. Our first two quarters have started amazingly, and I'm excited to share some of the highlights from our campus. Next slide, please. This year, one of the biggest success has been the implementation of our yonder pouches and our no-cell phone policy. These changes have helped students stay more focused in class and more engaged during social time. Without phones as a distraction, students are collaborating more, participating more, and building stronger relationships throughout the school day. Next slide, please. Our sports program has thrived during the first two quarters. Our girls volleyball team finished in second place. Our softball teams are in league competition currently in first place. After winter break, our basketball team will be the next to compete, followed by soccer in the spring. For the first time in several years, we have fielded all sports teams available to us. This includes the addition of girls and boys flag football and co-ed pickleball. This is a huge accomplishment compared to previous year and reflects the growing spirit and participation on campus. Our CTE programs continue to be a major contributor to student success. We are proud to offer cosmetology, esports, robotics, construction technology, ceramics, funded through Prep 28, in dual enrollment with Moreno Valley College. These pathways provide hands-on experience, help students develop the skills for college and future careers, and help with student engagement and increase attendance. Our extracurricular activities and spirit days have helped strengthen school culture and build positive relationships on campus. March Mountain has now over 10 active clubs, which is an increase from the past two years. These clubs give students more opportunities to get involved and find their place on campus. Our leadership groups have had excellent opportunities to grow this year. Students from peer leadership ASB, BSU, and esports leadership attended the CADA Leadership Conference, where they participated in workshops and team-building activities. These experiences have helped shape a stronger leadership culture at March Mountain. We have expanded our field trip experience to support college and career readiness, including the Ben Clark Training Center, the Contractors Union for Career Exploration. Our College and Career Day, professionals came to campus to share information about future opportunities for our students. These events motivate our students to explore career pathways and build goals for their future. Our enrollment has continued to increase this year. We have added a new RSP class to better support with IEPs throughout the district. Combined with our yonder system and no-cell phone policy, our campus climate has become more focused and positive and academically driven. We are proud to report that we have had zero suspensions and zero major incidents during the first two quarters. In quarter two alone, 25 students graduated early, and nearly 25 additional students are returning successfully to their comprehensive high school. The new quarter system has allowed students to earn credits faster and stay more motivated. We are grateful for our teachers, administration, and staff, whose support makes this possible. March Mountain continues to be an amazing place for students who thrive in a smaller, more individualized setting. Looking ahead, sorry, guys. Looking forward, we are excited about the opportunity to expand our CTE pathways here at March Mountain. This growth, this growth will create more hands-on options for students and increase opportunities for career exploration. Thank you again, Board President Brandy Clark, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Wakaba. For your continued support, March Mountain is growing, thriving, and building a stronger foundation for student success.
Thank you for your excellent report. Would any board members like to say any comments?
Yes. I just wanted to kind of thank you on highlighting, like, your CTE programs, and then, as well as in the end, when you brought up how you guys are looking forward to expanding that and having more hands-on and encouraging career exploration. I think that's very important at all our schools, especially considering that not all students want to do the same things and follow the same path. So, thank you. Great presentation.
I, I want to congratulate you on your presentation. And what I take away from your presentation is that your leadership opportunities have increased, and you keep going back to the pouches. And, and how that has redirected everybody to be more academic during, during their class period. So, how long did that really take for it to, to?
Settle in?
Show the, the effects of it?
Um, I don't feel that it took long at all. When we first came to school, the pouches were a little behind, but once they came, we were okay with it, and we didn't have, like, big incidents or things where, like, people weren't having, like, hiding their phones or anything like that. And I've heard from a lot of my peers that it's, like, actually a good, positive thing on campus. So, I don't think it took long.
I want to congratulate you and March Mountain for that. That's, uh, that's a step forward. And I noticed the trend is to get away from the social piece of the phones and use it more educationally.
Yes.
And that's to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I, I wrote some notes, but I'm not gonna even read those. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
I don't know who your teachers are, or even your principal, but make sure you tell them that I say they've done a great job, not just with you, because I'm believing that your classmates and some of your other schoolmates are just equipped as you are. So, but you did a fantastic job. And make sure you let them know that I appreciate what they do for you and the rest of your, your classmates.
Thank you. Dr. Rice is actually here, guys. It's Dr. Rice.
What, what did you say again?
Dr. Rice.
You said she's here?
Dr. Rice is the principal.
Yeah.
Oh! Oh, that, the bald-headed guy?
Yeah.
She, she hit her, she hit her face, man. She didn't want you to know that she was laughing at you.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for being here. And I want to congratulate you, not only you, but your family, because you need that support, you know, to, to encourage you to, to go above and beyond. But I like everything that you said, but something that is, you know, like, kind of make me think is, like, you talk about all the different, you know, like, sports now that you have at your school. And, you know, like, you guys are very proud of it, because you're doing really good, you know, like, finished in second place in volleyball. Your softball, you know, teams are in competition currently in first place, like you said. And then, the other thing that you mentioned was the 25 students graduated earlier.
Yes.
So, you know, that shows the great work that your principal is doing, and not only him, but everything, everyone who is involved, you know,
Yeah.
teachers, instructional assistants, and so, thank you for coming here and.
Thank you for having me. Thanks a lot.
I just wanted, I'm sorry, before you go, I'm so sorry. Um, I just wanted to say real quick, you're a fantastic public speaker.
Thank you.
You did a great job, great presentation, and every time I've visited March Mountain, it's a gem. It's a, it's a great, it's a great place for students, and thank you, Dr. Rice, for your leadership there. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I am very grateful for your information regarding the campus culture and clubs, the leadership opportunities, and most importantly, the climate. I am so excited to hear, over the last two quarters, zero suspensions and major incidents. That's a testament to the principal, the leadership, the staff, and you students. So, thank you. When you feel welcome and warm in, in the school, this is the result. So, thank you for your amazing report and great job.
Thank you.
Now, we are moving on to E9. Dr. Wakaba will provide the superintendent's district updates and information. Dr. Wakaba?
Thank you, President Clark. So, we always begin by acknowledging our responsibility to be good stewards of our First People's Territory, which is the land that we live and work in. And former President Brandy, Sammy Luna did a great job of mentioning that. But I do think it's important that we acknowledge our vision, our mission, and our portrait of a graduate. And every month, I have the pleasure of demonstrating to our community the examples, the student examples that represent these ideals. Obviously, we had Serenity, who did a fabulous job presenting our March Mountain. And if you look at the, especially the portrait of a graduate, I can guarantee you that she is every single one of those items. And she clearly distinguished and represented those as she took questions from our board. Adaptable, collaborative, communicative, a critical thinker, creative, and somebody who perseveres. So, kudos to you, Kirill, for making us look great. Start with our special recognition. I'm gonna ask three of our students to come up, and I'm gonna ask Dr. R.C. to join me at the podium, so she can kind of help him, guide him towards the, the mic. So, we have Belinda Aguilar. Belinda, if you can come up. Isabel McGregor. Isabel, if you can come up, please, Isabel. And Moises Garcia. Moises, come on up. Oh, it's okay, we'll wait for him. So, while we wait for Moises, and I know Isabel is running a little bit late, but we'll make sure that we recognize her when she comes in. Every summer, our County Office of Education sponsors a competition to see how many books and how many words students can read. And so, last year, we had one student be recognized from our school district for this amazing distinction. This year, we have three students who have been recognized. So, we're gonna start with Belinda. Belinda read 248,205 words. She's a fifth-grade student at Moreno Elementary. So, Belinda, you know we're gonna ask you questions. Of all of those words you read, which was your favorite book?
Of, of what?
Which, which was the favorite, your, your favorite book, your favorite story that you read during the summer?
Maybe, I forgot the title, but it's with, like, a pug. And it's, and he's telling the story about how, oh, how he, how he helped his owner recover all, all her souvenirs when it fell from a, like, a cliff.
Very good, very good. I, it's hard to remember all the titles when you read 248,000 words. But I love that you love pugs, because I love pugs. I always say pugs, not drugs. So, it's a good thing we're on the same page. Board, did you have any questions for Belinda?
I have a question, Belinda. When is your favorite time to read? Do you have a special time, like, is it in the evening before you go to bed, or is it in the morning when you wake up, or during lunch, or just any time?
Hmm, any time.
Any time. That's good. That's good. Congratulations.
I have a question.
You go ahead. No, after you.
Why do you like reading?
I don't really know. It's, it's just when I first saw it, I just really liked how it was. I liked how people would tell their stories. I liked how people would tell their stories on the books and different things.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, Belinda, we're gonna ask you to stay there. Um, Moises and Dad and Mom, if you guys, if you can come up, please. Moises is a fourth grade student at Box Springs Elementary. Moises read 97,653 words. Congratulations, Moises. Oh, of course, he's got, you gotta look sharp. He knows that pictures are coming, so you gotta look sharp. And Moises, on that podium right there, is a special plaque for you, if you wanna, that's for you.
Mom, fix this California. There you go. There you go.
Okay, so for Moises, Mom or Dad, ju- I, I think the board has some questions, so I'll let the board ask questions. Uh, go ahead, Moises. What's your question?
Hi, Moises.
Hi.
It's Santa Claus. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Any, any comments, any congratulations for Moises?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job, well done.
Good job, well done. You, thank you.
And I was just, I was told that Isabel is running a little bit late, so we'll recognize her as soon as she comes in. But if we want to take some pictures with our kiddos, please, Board? Is 12th grade Canyon Springs High School student Sarah Jackson. So, Sarah, can you please come up to the podium? So, Sarah sang the National Anthem and presented a speech to the 14th Annual Veteran and Small Business Trade Show. The award is called the Skin in the Game Award, and it recognizes individuals who demonstrate exceptional commitment, perseverance, and personal investment in their goals. It honors students who show leadership, overcome obstacles, and make meaningful contributions to their school or community. They presented her with two awards. One of them was, uh, one for her and one for the district, both called Skin in the Game Award, representing the next 50 years of championing veteran entrepreneurship. Congratulations. Okay, so Sarah, since you're a high schooler and you're about to graduate, you, we put you on the spot a little bit. So, share with us a little bit about the award and what you spoke of. Hit the mic. There you go.
There we go. Sorry. Um, so, I kind of spoke about, um, my contribution mostly to the community and my school and the people around me and how important, um, one person's impact and the choices they make can have on a whole entire generation of people.
Very good. Congratulations. So, your family's with you.
Yes.
I know some familiar faces back there. Can you talk, can you tell the board, um, what Mom and Dad do with us?
Um, my mom is an elementary music teacher at Moreno Elementary.
Okay.
And my dad is Administrator Vice Principal at Badger Springs Middle School.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just congratulations. That's awesome. I, I would love to hear more, but your summary of it sounds amazing and hopefully we can hear more about it, um, sometime. Yeah, thank you.
We're very proud of you. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's not easy to stand up there and watch, look, and look, look at us face to face and then turn around and then you see more faces. You did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Sarah, congratulations. And how long have you been singing? I know, I know your mother very well, so.
I've been singing practically since I was born.
John. I just want to congratulate you and your family. It is, you know, um, nice that you're doing this. Takes a lot of, like Mr. CJ said, you know, courage to be in front of people. And you being so young, you know, so, thank you for doing what you're doing and congratulations again.
I just want to say congratulations and thank you so much for being here. We're very proud of you.
Thanks.
I had the opportunity of seeing you at the Veterans Day event and you were amazing. I know we're describing it, but I don't think words can do, you know, do it justice. You're amazing. You're very talented. You're very inspirational and thank you again for coming and congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job, Kiro. So, next up is a familiar face to our Board of Education. We've seen her here before. We'd like to welcome Jazay Zera, uh, Zera Rizvi back up to the podium. She's an 11th grader from Canyon Springs High School. So, Jazay won this year's Voice of Democracy Audio Essay Contest. Her brilliantly written audio essay answered the question, "How are you showing patriotism and support for our country?" What an, uh, such an appropriate topic for what's happening right now in our country. So, kudos to you. The Voice of Democracy Contest is facilitated by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of VFW and is open to students in grades nine through 12. Jazay will now compete at the next level with a chance to move on to the state contest. So, Jazay, my question is, what did you write in your essay about how we show patriotism?
So, in my essay, I wanted to take a more unique approach. Um, we know patriotism is shown in our country through grand speeches and big applauses. But specifically, I wanted to focus on what an everyday patriot is. People like here, everyone here today who is standing up for their community, people like nurses who put in time and make sure that our community is healed and is able to prosper. Teachers, collaborators, everyone who works and does their part to make sure that our country as a whole is able to succeed and prosper.
Board, any questions or comments?
I have a question. Um, I was wondering what initially encouraged you to speak on this topic?
So, I am already, you guys know me, I'm a pretty, um, hardworking and achieving student. And I believe that the opportunities that this district has provided me was ever since I was in elementary school, I knew that I had to be an achieving student and that I wanted to achieve all the goals that I had in my life. And I knew that it was through this district that I was able to prosper and that the opportunities that I have been given aren't available to everyone. And I wanted to use the opportunities that I have, not only to uplift myself, but also to uplift people that are higher than me, um, to list people higher than I am and give those opportunities to all children from all schools, um, the opportunity to succeed and achieve any goals that they desire.
That's great. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment on, uh, what you spoke about. You mentioned communities.
Yes.
And you mentioned all the people in the community. And that's one of the things that we're lacking in this country right now. Our tight-knit communities that uplift each other. And so, I expect to see you on C-SPAN sometime in the future. All ready?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very inspirational. Thank you. Thank you for being a leader in our community. Um, if I may ask, what do, what are your future plans after?
Uh, currently, I am president of my school's health academy, so I really want to prosper in the healthcare field. Um, I want to become hopefully an anesthesiologist and study medicine and of course, help our communities thrive better than they are right now.
That's amazing. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow. You know, it takes a very strong individual to have such an amazing impact on their school, amazing impact on their district, amazing impact within the commen- uh, community. And, um, I just want to know, do you practice self-care? Like, do you, I, I'm serious because I see that you want to give and I see that you are strong and you want to be of service. And I believe you can do anything you want to do. You will be that anesthesiologist from our mouth to God's ears. But just remember to take care of you, take a breath, and do you do that now?
Yes, I think mental health is such an important aspect. It's currently some of the things that I'm advocating right now in my school and hopefully to make a new club in our school at Canyon Springs. Um, I believe mental health is really where it still, uh, where it all instills at. That's where if you don't have the correct mindset for something, you won't be able to achieve it to your fullest potential. And in order to be in your full potential, you need to be able to know how to time manage and how to be organized and take on what you are able to. And of, of course, know your own limits.
Wow. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jazay. Um, Jazay's only 11th grader, so we get her one, we'll see her more times here next year, I'm sure. I want to hone in on something that you said because I want to give you credit for a couple of things. You know, as a district, we recognize that there's a lot of opportunity for our students and our families in our district. But the biggest, uh, I think reward for us is when we hear it from students like you. And so, those opportunities were afforded to you. You took advantage of them. But those opportunities are afforded to every 30,400 students of ours. If they all just took advantage of the support that we have, of the, of the programs that we have, they would have the same success that you, so kudos to you. And thank you for advocating for us. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All righty, some other district highlights. We want to definitely recognize and thank our Wellness Department for putting on another amazing event. On November 19th, they held Bountiful Harvest. We had a couple of trustees in attendance and some committee members and some electeds there as well. We served 168 families Thanksgiving meal kits on that day. And then the Thursday and Friday after, another 142 families were served for a total of 310 meal kits. So, kudo to the team. We could not have done this on our own. It took a lot of work and a lot of partnerships. So, again, thank you to our wellness center, but also to, thank you to our community partners for supporting us, uh, to support our, um, community. On November 15th, we had 52 students attend the Latino Network Annual Student Leadership Conference. This is hosted at, um, UC Riverside. We had every single one of our high schools represented, our comprehensive and our alternative high schools. This is an amazing opportunity for students to experience leadership opportunities, get to learn what it's like to be a student leader and eventually to be a, an adult leader. And also, I want to particularly thank, uh, Vice President Luna for bringing this opportunity to our district and to our students. Um, through her leadership and her advocacy with that group, we were able to afford this to our kiddos. So, thank you to Vice President Luna and thank you to our kiddos who attended. I know they had a blast. We were planning on having the Valley View Football Team with us today, but because we didn't know what the results of last Friday's game were gonna be, we didn't want to interfere and interrupt practice and film and all that. But, um, for the second time in their history, our Eagles won a division championship. Congratulations to them. The championship game was extremely exciting, very stressful. Uh, some gray hairs on my end because of that, but it was just amazing. Last second, uh, field goal kick that won the game, 20 to 18 over Baldwin Park High School. Congratulations to them. We see Proud Papa, our principal, Mr. Gilliard, back there, smiling from ear to ear. We're gonna have the football team with us on the 27th of January to formally recognize them. So, kudos to them. Every month, we also present our attendance, um, updates. We are striving for 95 or, or higher. Glad to share that our elementary schools are 93.56%. Our middle schools continue to just lead the pack at 94.47. And our high schools right behind them at 93.67 for a district-wide total of 93.61. Uh, some familiar schools leading the pack here, North Ridge Elementary at 95.95, Vista Heights at 95.29, and Butterfield Language Academy at 94.99. Congratulations to them. And a couple of save the dates. We have our elementary basketball tournament that's happening this Saturday, starting at 7:30 until approximately 2 o'clock. So, if you're able to spend the entire day with us or just pop in, it's gonna be at Canyon Springs High School. And then our District Science and Engineering Fair on January 23rd, when we get back from the break, at 4:00 PM at Moreno Valley High School. That's my report for this month. And if Isabel gets here, we'll, I'm gonna ask the board if we can please take a pause and recognize her. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Dr. Rubacava. We're now moving on to E 10A. The Approval of Resolution Number 2025-26-49, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Um, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Bar Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Ms. Leyva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Stepped away. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye. That motion has passed with five yes and one absent. Um, please, I'd like to call on Trustee Johnson to present, oh, he's not here. So, we'll come back to the presentation if that's okay, and we'll move on to Item 10B. So, I am going to move on to Item 10B, which is the Approval of Resolution 2025-26-50, National Mentoring Month in January 2026. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
That was motioned by, uh, Trustee Leyva, seconded by, uh, Trustee, Trustee Luna. I'm so used to, trust, trustee, Vice President Luna and Clerk Williams. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Bar Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Ms. Leyva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson stepped away. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye. That motion has carried five present and, uh, five yes and one absent. I'd like to call on myself to do this resolution. Um, to, I'd like to ask that Dr. Rack come to the podium, also known as Mr. Philip Peebles, Director of Student Services. Dr. Rack stands for Doctor Random Acts of Kindness. He will be accepting this resolution. Today, we acknowledged that the future of our district, state, and nation depends on our youth. Well-educated, confident, and nurtured students will create a more sustainable cities, counties, states, and our nation, in our nation. Mentors in our district are an essential part of our success and the success of our students. Mentoring encourages positive life and social skills, promotes self-esteem, bolsters academic achievement and college access, supports career exploration, and nurtures youth leadership's development. In honor of mentors, mentors' wonderful work, we are proud to proclaim January as Mentoring Month in the Moreno Valley Unified School District. Would you like to say some words?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening. Board President, members of the Board of Education. Board President, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Rubicava, and distinguished guests. My name is Philip Peoples, Director of Student Services. Mentoring is one of the most powerful tools we have to change the trajectory of a student's life. Our school mentors walk alongside students every day, offering guidance, accountability, and hope. Our administrative mentors, and I'm going to introduce four amazing administrator mentors in a couple of minutes. Our administrative mentors pour into our site leaders, helping them grow in their practice so schools remain safe, positive, and focused on learning. Community mentors extend that circle of support beyond the classroom, showing students that an entire city believes in their potential. And our district office mentors model service and leadership, coaching staff to remove barriers and building systems where all students can thrive. When mentoring is intentional and consistent at every level, growth isn't accidental, it's inevitable. Thank you for allowing me the honor to accept this resolution.
I will share that I do call him Dr. Rack because he earned his PhD in random acts of kindness because he is a great person in this district. Mr. Johnson, would you like to present?
Yes, ma'am.
Your approval, I mean, the resolution for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day?
Yes, thank you. The third Monday in January is a day set aside to commemorate the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is an opportunity to recognize his life and contributions to our country and work towards making his vision a reality in our schools as well as our community. Embracing diversity is a key component of our district's mission as it relates to equality. Learning about Dr. King will help students better understand diversity, justice, and equality. Now, the knowledge and understanding of the philosophy of respect for the rights of others, civil rights, nonviolence, and quality of life will help students carry Dr. Martin Luther King's Jr.'s message forward. Now, as a board, we are happy to recognize January the 19th as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Day and ask all schools in our district to participate in appropriate activities that educate students, community about his contributions to this country. So, I'd like to present this to the two of you. Let me see, I have two of you. Hang on, hang on. Do it like this. Just so we don't get into a fight, I'm going to put this right here and we'll do it like this. You first?
Thank you so much.
And Dwight, my buddy? You didn't mind it, did you?
No.
All right, I just wanted, I don't want you to get mad at me.
Oh, no. It's all good.
So, which one of you guys want to speak and say something?
Ladies first.
Oh, ladies first? Okay, good.
Good evening, Board President, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Rubicava, and distinguished guests. My name is Rochelle Wright. I'm an education specialist at Palm Middle School. Thank you for the opportunity to accept this resolution this evening. This resolution represents hope, voice, and visibility for our students. It affirms that they are seen, they're supported, and valued, not just for who they are becoming, but who they already are. For our community, it reflects unity, partnership, and the shared responsibility we all carry to uplift and protect our children and scholars. For the Moreno Valley Educators Association, this resolution is a powerful reminder that the work done in the classrooms, hallways, and beyond truly matter. It honors the long hours that we give and dedicate, the tireless advocacy that we do in our careers, and the belief that we, that every student can succeed. So, tonight, we celebrate not just the resolution, but a continued commitment to equity, opportunity, and excellence for every learner we serve. Thank you so much for this honor.
Good evening, Board President, Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Rubicava and Cabinet, and our guests tonight. Welcome. It's an honor to accept this resolution tonight on behalf of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. It's an honor to accept it on behalf of CSEA and on behalf of our community to, we represent so many diverse students and staff members. So, it's an honor to accept this resolution tonight on behalf of CSEA and for our community because we really do strive to not only make sure that all of our babies are educated, doesn't matter what you look like, what you believe in. We are here to protect you, stand up for you. We have your back. We're here to make sure you succeed. And the same goes for our staff as best as we possibly can. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, and it's an honor again. Thank you.
Okay, good. Before you guys walk away, our cabinet and our board would like to shake your hands. So, can you just start over there and just shake the hand, please?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to item EC. The approval of resolution number 2025-2651, School Board Recognition Month, January 2026. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Ms. Leyva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye. This motion has passed, six yes, zero no. Now, I'd like to call on Dr. Rubicava to present this resolution.
Thank you, President Clark. The mission of public schools is more important today than it ever was before. We need to continuously meet the diverse educational needs of all 31,400 students, 30,400 students and families, and empower them to become productive citizens. As school board members, we are committed to children. We believe that every child can be a successful learner and that the best education is tailored to each child's individual needs. School board members advocate for the best possible service to our students every single day, despite the ongoing challenges that we all continue to face. I can attest to this. Our board daily is communicating with elected officials, senior community partners, other districts, and other agencies to make sure that our students have the best possible education. In honor of the work that our school board members have done, we are extremely proud to announce that we have declared January 2026 as School Board Recognition Month. We encourage all community members to join us in recognizing our school board members' dedication and very, very hard work. Working together, they create an education system that meets the needs of all of our students. We are proud to express our appreciation to our school board members and proclaim January 2026 as School Board Recognition Month in the Moreno Valley Unified School District.
Can I start with Student Board Member Isabella Carvalho?
Yes, sorry, I was. I'd just like to say thank you. This is technically my last meeting, so I'm just very, like, I feel very blessed and I appreciate this. So, sorry. So, I recently went to the CHEBA conference, as some of you also went, and it was very informative. And it's just unfortunate that I learned a lot of these things now at the end of my term. But I just think it would be beneficial if the student interns would also go so then before their term, they could be knowledgeable. But yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Leyva?
It's been a year since I, you know, stepped in as a board member, had the opportunity to, to be elected by my community to represent them. I have always been, you know, the type of person who thinks that we should advocate, you know, not only for our parents and, you know, staff, but mainly for our students because they deserve the best. And being here, you know, gives you a different perspective of how things work. I feel blessed to be, you know, on this side. But I also have a lot of learning to do to represent better. Like, what you shared, that's something that I share with Dr. Rubicava that I feel that as a board member, when you're a new board member, you know, you need that type of training at the beginning because there's a lot of things that you don't know and that is needed to, to be known so that you can be more effective in what you do. So, I just want to say thank you for, for having that opportunity. I was, you know, watching Miss Universe and Claudia Bosch won the title. And she says something, you know, because I, not that I question, you know, why am I here? Because I know why I'm here. But she reminds me, you know, of the values that we need to have when you're here, that you don't have to be bragging about, you know, like that you're honest or like this, or that you're, you know, like, you know, like true or anything like that. You have to show it with your actions, with what you do. And something that she said is, because a lot of people, you know, have asked me, why are you there? And only the Lord knows why I'm here. And I know why I'm here because I need to, you know, know better, learn better, to advocate for what I know what's right. And I don't want to make it longer because I don't want to take time. But, you know, Miss Universe said like, hard work pays off. And they were questioning her, you know, why is she Miss Universe? And she said, I'm, I'm here because it was the Lord's will for me to be here. And that's how I feel. And I, you know, appreciate the people, you know, who has taught me, you know, many things. So, thank you.
I'm going to take a little different approach. About maybe three or six months ago, we had folks all over this place. All the seats were just about filled. I'm just wondering, do y'all love us that much where you can just stay home and watch us on TV? Or, we had to cook dinner because our husband gets off late now and our wives gets off late as well. I don't know. But if you're watching, please come back because I miss two or three of you. I could call your names, but I'm not going to. You know who you are. Those seats used to be filled every time we had a board meeting. Sometimes you'd throw darts at us, but you know what we did? We took those darts, just took them out of our bodies and we put some tape on it and then we were okay. So, if you want to throw darts, come on back. But, but we, but we, we miss you. Those of you that are not here, those of you that are here, thank you, thank you, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. We're here because of you and your children. So, continue to come. And when you see your neighbor, if your neighbor used to come but not, the neighbor doesn't come anymore because you said everything is okay? Tell them it's not okay. Mr. Johnson said, "Come on out because I miss you." Thank you very much.
Trustee Williams.
This is one year serving on the board. And the most enjoyable part, or one of the most enjoyable parts of serving on the board is to see our students come up and speak about their accomplishments. And I was very moved by our young lady from Canyon who spoke about communities. And we're going to bring this community together through the school board. And if we continue to have students speak about their experience in our district like that, we can't miss. We're going to be on point. And we, as the adults, need to foster that, that excitement over and over again. And to the dedicated employees, administrators, all of the people in the district, I thank you for your support and the support of our children in this district. One of my favorite sayings about Moreno Valley, "Students in Moreno Valley go to school with people who don't look like them." And that you can't buy on Amazon and you can't order it online. It's something that's cultivated and it will continue to grow a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Williams. Trustee Luna.
Dr. Rubicava, thank you for the resolution and acknowledging the board. I was, unlike my colleagues, appointed to this board and I'm very grateful. When I was appointed, I didn't know what I was signing up for. And I was really concerned I was going to feel like a fish out of water. And of course, the first couple of meetings I did. But as I progressed, I felt like this is where I belong. As I said in my interview, when I was asking for the board to select me, I love serving my community. That is my passion. And doing it in this capacity is, it's very, it's an honor. It's very humbling. One of my biggest regrets, both of my kids went through this district. And as they were going through this district, I had no idea how amazing it was. I missed out on a lot of opportunities for them. Now that I'm on this board, I want to make sure that no other parents or students miss out on opportunities that we offer. And under Dr. Rubicava's leadership, the opportunities just keep getting better. And with our cabinet, with all of our teachers and staff at this district, it's just going to keep getting better. And it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to serve. As a board, I feel like we govern pretty well, especially when you look at surrounding districts and what they're talking about. We're actually talking about our students and achievement, not banning books. We're not wasting time on that. So, one of, I just want to kind of piggyback on something Ms. Leyva said. One of my favorite quotes is, "What you do speaks so loudly, I cannot hear what you say." Meaning, actions are everything. So, I hope if you take anything from me, you can hear me speak all day, but I hope you see through my actions how much this opportunity means to me and how much I love serving this district and this community. And I pledge to always be here for you guys as long as I'm kept in this role. Thank you.
Well, I almost got choked up, you know, a woman who don't, we don't really like to cry. But I will share that this has been such an honor to be on this Board of Education. I was a parent. My children went through this district. It was amazing then and it's more so a
It was amazing then and it's more so amazing now. And every day I wake up, and you guys might think this is a joke, but I am very serious. I thank God for having a seat at the table where I can have an impact, a positive impact on this district and our community. There have been highs and there have been lows. But one thing that remains the same is we all care about these kids. We all care about this district. That is our common ground. And when I see the scores rising, their testing, their grades rising, suspensions lowered, when I see us wrapping around each kid, when I see us really looking like a family, that means so much to me. When I see that I can walk in any space and no matter who you are, you can say, "Hi, Ms. Clark. How was your day? Do you need anything? This is what my child is doing in the district. Let me show her grades." I meant to wear a bracelet today. It is the most amazing bracelet, better than any bracelet I ever received in my life. And that's because I saw a little girl, I will mention her school, can I mention her school? She goes to Badger Springs, but she made me a bracelet that had hearts around it that spelled Brandy. And she said, "I made this in my class. My mom said I could give it to you." And I know it sounds like itself, like, oh, I'm getting rewarded. But it's just the little things, the smiles. When I walk into a classroom, when no one knows I'm coming, and I see the teacher so engaged and she's teaching these kids. When I see Dr. Arce, and I want to call you out, but when I see you talking about the grades and you're so passionate about what we can do better. When Dr. Rubacava calls us and says, "This is what's going on in the district. What can we do to support these kiddos?" It's so much love. It's so much common ground. And that's why I'm so happy to be part of. I am thrilled to sit here and say that this is the best district. I know plenty of board members. I see them and I've visited plenty of districts. And I'm not being biased, I can truly share that Moreno Valley is a family. That the Moreno Valley Unified School District is a community. That the Moreno Valley School District is home. And the Moreno Valley Unified School District is the best. So thank you for this resolution. Thank you for the gifts. And I appreciate it. The work is not easy. We may look like it's easy, but it's not. We make tough, critical decisions that impact the lives of everyday children. And this Board of Education right here, I truly know, we want to see every student succeed. And I'm going to stop, but I just got really hot right now. I just got really deep. I just want to talk about like the raids and things like ICE. Our district is prepared. We're not letting anybody come in and take our kiddos. You know, it's just, you know, our kids, they need to feel safe. And this district will do anything it takes to keep every child in this school safe. So, I just, I think about it every night. Dr. Rubacava knows I call them. Sometimes I'm a passionate person. So, anyway, thank you for the resolution. It is tough work. We're going to keep doing the good work and now we'll move on.
President Clark, if I may? So I just saw that Isabel just came in with Ma. No, it's okay. So, did we want to wait for Mom? Okay, perfect. So Isabel, why don't we wait for Mom and then we'll call you up afterward? Okay? No worries. Thank you.
Now, moving on to public comments on agenda items. Any person requesting to speak on any item on the agenda may do so at this time or when the item is addressed by the Board of Education. Individual speakers shall be allowed to speak for three minutes on any agenda item. The Board of Education shall limit the total time for public input on each agenda item to 21 minutes. Board bylaw 9323B, section five, per board bylaw 9323, twice the allotted time will be provided for a member of the public utilizing a translator. Ms. Claudia, do we have any comments?
No public speakers for agenda items.
Thank you. We are moving on to item G, public comments on non-agenda items. The Board of Education encourages public comments. During this section, staff may briefly respond to statements or questions or may ask questions for clarification. The board may refer to staff or other resources for factual information, direct staff to speak back at a subsequent meeting and/or direct staff to place the topic on a future agenda item. If someone wants to lodge a complaint against an employee, the appropriate form may be obtained at any school or the Community Education Center. Individual speakers shall be allowed to speak for a total of three minutes on non-agenda items regardless of the number of issues to be addressed by the individual. The Board of Education shall limit the total time for public input on non-agenda items to 21 minutes. Per board bylaw 9323, twice the allotted time will be provided for a member of the public utilizing a translator. With the Board of Education consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional people speak only if they have something new to add. Board bylaw 9323B, C, section five. Ms. Claudia, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
No public speakers on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Moving on to H, item H1, the Employee Association Reports. And today we have CSEA presenting. Is President Josh Caban or Vice President Dwight Taylor able to take the podium? Okay, now we are moving on to item I, comments from the board, from board members. Even though we just said a lot of comments, let's start with you, Ms. Isabel Cabal.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Ms. Johnne Leyva? I just want to say that I'm really proud, you know, seeing that we recognize our students. It's very important, you know, to showcase everything, you know, that we have and especially, you know, showing that we care by, you know, them coming over here and being able to come and talk to us, you know, the things that they like about the district. So I just want to say that, I want to say that I haven't had the opportunity to go to various events. And like, Harvest, Wonderful Harvest, it was amazing. I have always been part of that and been able to volunteer in a different way. And I was a crazy, you know, person running with the football game at Valley View. That I forgot I was a board member. I was screaming and cheering and running up and down. Dr. Rubacava was worried that I was going to get in trouble. But I was so excited and so proud of the kids, you know? They play so good. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I want to thank those of you that are here. But I'm wondering why some of our friends are not here tonight. I don't understand that. So, if you're at home and you're watching it on TV and you say, "I don't need to go," come out, come out at our next board meeting, because I miss you personally. And I miss some of you, you know who I'm talking about. I miss some of you at that mic. You know, I anticipate you guys having something great, you know, whatever you want to talk about, being here and everything. So, those of you that are at home, come on back and stay a while. And if you want to just stay home, give me a call and just tell me why you're staying home and you're not coming out anymore. I like that too. Anyway, so thank you guys for being here tonight. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Trustee Williams?
I just would like to say, I would just like to say, I hope everybody, as we come up on break, have a very restful holiday season. And I think we have to count our blessings in this day and age. And continue to support each other through the holidays. And we'll make 2026 a new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Vice President Luna?
I'll try to be brief as well. Just want to also celebrate Valley View football team. Yay. Reminds me of my high school days when John W. North took the first CIF football championship in 1996. Sorry, I just had to throw that out there. I was a senior. It was a great senior year. Also, visited Sacramento for the CSBA, California School Board Association Conference. As a delegate, I went a little bit earlier. Did delegate assembly. Just learning about some of the initiatives that CSBA is going to bring forth next year. And also, shout out to Josh Combs and Jessica Axe for the eSports All-Girls League at Valley View High School this past weekend. I got to represent as a big sister for Vista Heights Middle School and they won. Good job. Couple of things I want to mention, the Friday memo that stood out to me, Dr. Rubacava. I saw that our kids went to the Museum of Tolerance. You know, I did that as a field trip as a young person and that was life-changing. And I, when I became a parent, I took my kids and I think it's a great experience. The more kids we can take, the more adults we can take, the better. I'm sure, I saw your report, I'm sure, you know, everyone got a lot out of that. It's very moving. Also, something else I would like to learn a little more about. I saw the building classrooms model lesson at Serrano Elementary. Mr. Kane's fifth grade math lesson was a standout. I would like to hear a little more about that. Because, you know, I always talk about best practices. Like if we can, you know, somehow replicate those, that would be great. Because I know, you know, we're working on math. So, that's great news and I'd like to hear more about that. But anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. For me, I don't have too many comments. I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays, happy and safe holiday. Now we are moving on to comments from the superintendent, Dr. Rubacava.
Thank you, President Clark. So, we have, Isabel, Mom's here? Not yet? Oh, no. Did we lock the door? No worries. So, just know that, as soon as she comes in, we'll get started with that. So, we have, I have a lot of recognitions that we want to present to not only trustees but also just share with the community as a whole. So we have a tradition that every year we recognize and thank our outgoing board president for the amazing work that they've done leading this group for the year. So we have our plaque and our tiny little gavel so you can continue to make, give orders at home if you want. It's a working gavel. See? But on my behalf, I just want to say thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your work, your tireless work. And thank you for helping all of us come together as a board, continuing to come together as a board. So, thank you for serving as board president. We also want to recognize Isabella for fulfilling her first semester work with our board. Every one of the trustees talked about what an amazing district this is and I agree 100%. But I think the biggest factor of what makes us amazing are the students. And you are such an amazing kiddo. I am so proud of who you are, what you're becoming, your insights, your intelligence, your advocacy. You have just fresh ideas that you always bring. You're not shy about bringing even topics that are a little bit difficult to hear. And I just want to thank you for being such an amazing advocate for all of the kiddos that you represent. This is for you. And thank you again and congratulations on serving as our board trustee. You're going to have to ask Mom and Dad for permission to use the gavel at home, so. They're there, just, so you know. You know, there's a lot of positions on our board and they're all very important. They play a critical role. Not only in terms of the position itself as vice president, but also for Brandy and Mr. Johnson being kind of the veterans on our board, especially this year when we had three trustees that were brand new to our board. Vice President Clark, now President Clark, played an amazing role in that and just kind of guiding and molding the work that our team did as a whole. So, thank you, President Clark, for your work last year as vice president.
Thank you.
And one of the biggest responsibilities is every time there's an official document that the board passes, there has to be a signer to that official document. And so imagine being a first-year trustee, learning what it means to be a trustee, learning all of the processes and procedures that happen in a school district as large as ours, and then having all these papers put in front of you that you have to sign off on. Ms. Leyva, you did a fabulous job asking the critical questions and making sure that you were signing things that you were comfortable signing. So thank you for being an amazing clerk this last year. Mr. Williams, we hope you were practicing your handwriting because you're going to be doing a lot of signing this next year. No, no stamps. What signatures only? So, last month, we shared with our community and our board that we had been awarded and recognized with CSBA's Golden Bell Award. This is the Golden Bell. And this is in recognition of the amazing work that our Ed Services Team and our high schools and our secondary education team is doing regarding, in the area of dual enrollment and providing more opportunities for our high school students to earn college credit as a high school student. This is one of many Golden Bell Awards that we've received. But I want to in particular recognize Dr. Arce and her team for her vision and her dedication and her ganas in wanting to create this and make this bigger and bigger and bigger. We have been working on a continuing partnership to convert part of Vista de Lago into an early college program. And that continues with the soft launch happening next year. But if it wasn't for your vision and your dedication and you pushing, 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 it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here. So, I give you an official for your hard work. And last, but not least, now that we have Mom here, I want to bring up Isabel McGregor. Isabel, come on up. And Mom too, come on up. One, we love that you're in a festive mood, so very appropriately dressed. Isabel was one of our students that was also recognized for the Riverside County Office of Education Summer Reading Challenge. Isabel read 97,124 words. She's a fourth grade student at Northridge Elementary. And before I turn it over to you, Isabel and Mom, to share a few words and our board to ask some questions, I do want to share one thing because it's important that we recognize when things don't go right. So, Isabel, I want to apologize to you and to Mom. There was a little mix-up with the schedule when we presented the award when we went to your school. Remember, we showed up and we gave you, and Mom was supposed to be there? But we got there early and we missed Mom, so Mom wasn't there to see you get the award. But I called Mom and we shared pictures and I explained to her everything that happened. And we told her that we were going to have this opportunity here as well. So, I'm sorry that Mom wasn't there to see you get recognized in front of your students and your peers. But I'm glad that Mom is here and she gets to see you be recognized by our board. So congratulations to you and congratulations to Mom.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Isabel, so you love to read. What's your favorite, what's your favorite book that you've read so far?
I think it was technically from a library. I have it in my backpack. Well, it was something about this character called Viola. Relieving out her other Viola with her villain anxiety.
It sounds like an exciting book. So you got to email us the title and the author so we can check it out. I'm going to turn it over to the board and see if they have any questions or comments for you.
Isabel? Okay. I have the opportunity to know Isabel. I was working at the school site and something
True.
Something amazing about her is like you will see her during recess or anytime with a book in her hand. So, it just like, it was hard not to understand, but, you know, to admire. Such a little kid, you know, always carrying a book with her and taking Always carrying a book with her and taking that, you know, time to read, even if it was recess or it was lunch. So, and it has to come, you know, like I said, from the parents. So, I want to congratulate you, mom, for, you know, like, giving her that opportunity to read, but also for her having that talent and loving reading. So, Isabella, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Man, I am, I am so proud of you. Mom, you've done a wonderful job with her, man. She's
Thank you.
Is that, is that a cheerleading outfit? What is that you have on? Is that a cheerleading outfit? I don't know.
Looks like I'm dancing.
Oh, yes, okay, a dancer. So, you're a dancer?
I also have Tootsie Roll socks.
You're a dancer, okay. Well, everything looks good. You've done a wonderful job, so we're very proud of you. And mom, thank you so much for what you do too. And I'm sure it takes just more than just you. You've got some other folks that's helping you raise her, and she's done a great job, so continue doing that. And when you go to college and graduate, make sure you invite me, okay? You'll find my address, alright? Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Isabella, I'm curious, when did you, what age did you start reading? I know you read in school, but when did you start reading on your own?
Probably like
Can I speak out?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, I will speak. Actually, Isabella, when she was a very young age, she was diagnosed with speech delay. And one of the doctors diagnosed her, labeled her with autism, mild autism. So, at that time, she is my only daughter, so I sought all the possible help from the government to assist her, because, you know, that's my only daughter, and she is special. She is my treasure. So, I did my very best to prevent whatever that labeling to her. So, at an early age, like 2, 3, I've been like, teaching her how to read, teaching her how to write, to make sure. I always tell her, make sure you write or color within the line, don't exceed. And then, I always wipe out, like wipe out book or notebook, so she can write. And then, I always like, teach her how to read, something like that, so. And right now, she is very talkative and very sweet and friendly, and she loves reading. And I always encourage her how to read and to read more books, because that's the only thing that I can pass along with her as she grows up, because that's the only, what they call this, inheritance that nobody can take away from her. So, I came from very like, not very affluent family, but my father and my mom always instill upon us that education is the best inheritance that we can pass along. That's, I'm passing along to my daughter, right, baby?
You know, you illustrate one of the most important things that can happen between a parent and a student, and their child. Because you're the first teacher. See? And that's, that's, that's a beautiful, beautiful explanation. I thank you for being here, and congratulations again on your reading accomplishment. Thank you.
Congratulations, Isabella. That's a great accomplishment. I'm gonna ask you what I asked one of the other students, but I think I know what the answer is. Do you have a favorite time of day that you like to read?
Probably when I, like, find the books that I really want to, want to read in the library. And like, when I sit in the table, I like, just start choosing which one I should read. Then, after when I choose it, I read.
Usually, usually pick like, what, 2, 3, 4, 5 books, or?
Only like, 2.
2?
That's the whole limit.
And then you read a little bit of each one and decide from there?
Technically, so when I read to like, my teacher discusses us, it's like, I don't want to leave. For example, my teacher wants to go check out the books. Hey, you come in line. You can go in front of me. I want to read my book still.
That's good, that's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Isabella. Great job on reading. Keep up the good work. I challenge you to read 2 books in December, 3, 3 books in December. Can you do it?
I have to ask my librarian.
Okay, okay. Well, they're not. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Yeah.
He does.
He has the pull with the librarian.
We'll see what we can do.
I want to jump in it.
Okay, thank you.
Isabella mom, is it okay if we take a picture with you? Perfect.
Okay, the board will take a short recess for 5 minutes and reconvene at 6:46 PM. The Board of Education reconvened at 6:47 PM. We are now on Item K, Presentations to the Board. We are going to go to the MTSS Support Data, Academic Suspension and Chronic Absenteeism. Dr. Arce?
Thank you very much, President Clark. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Philip Peoples. Since the main focus of this cohort of schools is the work that they have done around, or the need for the focus on suspension, who more appropriate than to present and lead this presentation than Mr. Peoples? So, at this time, if I can have the principals please come on up, so you can be introduced? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arce. And I believe I mentioned it earlier today during the resolution. It's got 4 exceptional, exceptional school leaders and mentors. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you to the board members for everything that you do. We know that your job is hard, so thank you so much. Again, I'm proud to represent Moreno Valley Unified School District, the multi-tiered systems of support. Again, my mentor, Dr. Arce, thank you so much for supporting this work. And again, 4 exceptional, 4 of the best administrators that we have in the district. I just want to tell you, amazing, amazing administrators. So, I would love to introduce them. Dr. Nicole Mosheri over at Chaparral Hills Elementary School. We have Principal Mrs. Ayesha Smith over at Landmark Middle School, doing great things over there. Mrs. Stephanie Williams Mayrant over at Vista Heights Middle School, and Dr. Rice over at March Mountain High School. So, thank you so much for being here tonight. Again, we are gonna focus on multi-tiered systems of support, CCI, College Career Indicators, math, as well as chronic absenteeism. Our vision, again, to empower students to positively impact the world, and again, providing an equitable education for all students. Not just some students, but for all students. And then, really seeing them graduate with the 6 Portrait of Graduate Competencies. So, as we look, our goal, again, is to promote academic growth for every student. That's why I love these goals. It's not just for some, it's for all. So, promoting academic growth for every student, establishing college career readiness for every student, and providing a safe, welcoming, respectful, rigorous learning environment for every member of the school community. So, we're gonna go ahead and start off with our CERNA, the Claimed Evidence, the Reasoning and Action Steps. So, the claim. The claim is, overall, Moreno Valley Unified School District's schools improved in suspension rates on the state dashboard. However, continued focus is needed at several schools to support specific student groups to sustain growth in other areas of the dashboard. And again, we mentioned before, the CCI, the College and Career Indicators, the Chronic Absenteeism, as well as our math academics. So, our evidence. And this is great, right? Now, we have this official data from the California Dashboard. And so, what we did is, we really uploaded it here onto these slides, and you could see the 2024 comparative data to the 2025. And I just want you to look at it real quick. I think, you know, when I look at it, I could see a lot less red. Now, of course, there is some red there, and those are the things that we are aware of and we're working on. But a lot less red, you see some more blue, and you see a lot of green. And so, you could definitely see the difference between the 2024 comparative data with the 2025. So, I just want to, again, commend all the school leaders at all the 37, 38 schools, our district administrative staff, and our school board, you know, great work on this vast improvement. But there's still more to be done. So, we broke it down. This is our school, our district, I'm sorry, and this is the suspension rate. So, last year's suspension rate was at 3.6%. This year is 2.9%, declined by 0.7%. And you can see, we outlined the rectangular boxes in the color of where it's indicating. Over at Chaparral Hills, you can see their suspension rate last year, 2.9%, declined 0.5% to 2.5%, so she's in the green. Landmark Middle School, look at this. Went from 13.5% suspension rate to 6.9%, declined 6.6%. She's doing great things. I mean, they're all doing great things at the schools. Vista Heights, 7.7% suspension rate, down to a 2.6% suspension rate, 5.1% decline. And then, we have March Mountain, 10.3 to 10, or 7.7, declined 2.6%. And I'm gonna go ahead and say it, I'm gonna call it right now, December 9th, 2025, I can say that this is probably gonna be blue next year. If he doesn't have any suspensions If he doesn't have any suspensions right now, I'm going to call it blue for next year. So congratulations to our schools. And then again, March Mountain, with our graduation rate, 87.1%. He maintained it, it's still the 86.9, but the most important thing, right, is kids go over there and they feel welcome and loved and are graduating. But most importantly, this next slide, he's leading, look at this, he's leading Valverde Unified School District, Alford Unified, Parrish Union, Desert Sands, with comparative schools, at an 86.9% graduation clip. And again, remember, it's that welcoming, loving environment that we create for all of our students. So evidence to the claim. So over to the right, I want to focus on the areas that glow. We just really talked about that, the suspension decreases at the four schools. The areas which need to grow in Chaparral Hills is looking at that math. We need to look at the math. Landmark, African-American minimal change in chronic absenteeism, really only decreased by .2, so we're looking at that. And Vista Heights, again, the overall chronic absenteeism only increased 1%. And then at March Mountain, our CCI, again, the CCI is the College and Career Indicators on the California School Dashboard, is at 1.5%. So those are the areas our schools are going to focus on this evening. So the reasoning. And now they're all going to come up here in line of succession here with Dr. Mosheri first, and again, the possible reasons for the areas that glowed. Dr. Mosheri.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and jump right on into it. So we strengthened Tier One and Tier Two for our PBIS, that's one area that we've been working on. We've continued to build positive relationships with students and families. We provided additional PBIS training for our teachers and staff members, and we ensured that there was buy-in. We increased the buy-in for all staff. Okay? And I'll turn it over to Landmark.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. For Landmark, we implemented more corrective measures to provide our scholars with opportunities to learn, and then also implementing or developing and implementing more Tier One activities for all of our scholars, that's both academically and behaviorally. And our MTSS team, which consists of admin, counselor, student success code, school site, social worker, and teachers, et cetera, we have ongoing collaborations and follow-up, so that definitely supported us with decreasing our suspension rate. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Stephanie Williams Mayrant.
Good evening, everyone. So what we did at Vista Heights was we established a refocus intervention as an alternative to suspension, which focused on restorative practices and small group support. We refined our request for assistance Tier Two, Three for all educational partners and aligned our interventions appropriately and made sure that we had a suspension reentry process to decrease recidivism at our school site, which helped us tremendously. And then we also launched our Tier One PBIS incentives, school-wide through Pride Points. It was more of a relaunch and rebranding for buy-in with our students. And I'll turn it over to March Mountain.
Thank you. So our glows are positive relationships, building positive relationships for our students, creating a safe environment and space for our kiddos, collaboration with traditional high schools to support student transitions, and then also the improvement, the continuous improvement on systems with our quarter system, moving from the traditional system to a quarter system that gave our students an opportunity to accrue more credits.
So great work from our schools. You can see the reason why their suspension rates decreased so much. It's that intentional support that they're giving their students. Now, let's turn to the possible reasons for the areas that need to grow. And I'm going to, again, go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Mosheri.
Thank you. Short people. Okay, so a part of what we are working on for our areas to grow, we noticed that there was a lack of training for, and lots of absences in different, in the grade level. And this is not on the student side, it's on the teacher's side. This was evident in the data because this was one particular grade level that declined significantly while the other two grade levels rose, they increased. Also, last year's focus due to our data, because it was specific to our site, was ELA, specifically for African-American and English learners. That was an area that we did grow in, but now we're focusing back on math this year.
Thank you. So for Landmark, in regards to what we need to grow in is improving our lack of opportunities for students to feel engaged, our African-American students to feel engaged, which resulted in students reporting negative school experiences and not feeling like they had a sense of belonging. And then also, there was evidence of disproportionate discipline practices, so we are definitely looking at the quantitative data for that.
And for Vista Heights, we recognize that our ISP process was very inconsistent, and we weren't recognizing that with our kids and what we were giving them to make sure that they were recouping those absences. Specific student groups reported an unfavorable sense of belonging and engagement, so we really targeted those student groups this year. And then inconsistent SART team intervention. And so we recognize that that's something that we need to build on.
So as you can see, there's a lot of areas of growth for March Mountain. So for us, it's the low A through G completion rates due to credit deficiency. When students arrive on our campus, knowing that those students are credit deficient, they're not worried about being A through G, so we need to focus on that. Insufficient access to March Mountain students for career technical education pathways, which we have our cosmetology students. Most of our cosmetology students are at the comprehensive, so we only have three students that are our students that are on campus, so a lot of times, those kids are coming from other high schools. Also, a limited awareness, understanding the CCI requirements, and a high mobility transient student population. And then also, facilities are not equipped for CTE courses yet until the modernization and limited participation in college-level coursework.
All right, thank you. So as we move on to actions or next steps, so as you know, our district, we hold our Alliance Task Force meetings several times throughout the year, about four times throughout the year. And one of those things that we talk about is the Hardest Success Task Force, the Chronic Absenteeism. One of the things that came out of the Hardest Success Chronic Absenteeism Task Force was something that NIE helped to develop, which is these cards that we actually gave to every single school site and their school leaders to just really fill out for students. You know, it's good to see you here. It's good to have you in school, you know, with a positive message and building that sense of belonging. And so we gave some examples right there at the bottom of the slide of what some of those cards will say. We also asked our school sites to have teachers join the PBIS teams, the MTSS attendance teams, to identify students at risk of chronic absenteeism, get more staff members involved in these meetings to really support the school and the site. And then also, finally, strengthen family partnerships, contact through, you know, two personal contacts. We want those contacts to be positive. It's good to see your kid in school today. You know, it's, you know, I think parents, you know, would love to hear that, those positive contacts of their students. And as you can see, also, a lot of things that the district are doing to support the schools and the students, and I really want to highlight the PBIS and the work that Cody Harvey is doing with the schools and really building out the new 3.0 PBIS system. And then again, supporting, impacting instruction through the Guiding Coalition, our PLC in the Year Three, our District PLN for math and doing the walkthroughs, the Dial Team, the District Instructional Academic Leadership Team, as well as building thinking classrooms. No more of this sitting in rows of students I could see the back of somebody else's head. It's now, let's get up and engage with new people. Let's use the whole room for instruction and not just a teacher teaching. Let's let the students teach each other. So again, CCI, I think the first bullet point is probably the most important of the CCI, College and Career Indicators. We need people to understand how students can qualify. Of course, it sees or better in your A through G courses, it's taking dual enrollment courses, it's completing those CTE pathways, joining the ROTC programs. Those things can get you qualified for CCI, so I think really increasing that awareness is crucial, not only for students, but for staff, and having the staff aware what those CCI indicators are. And of course, our transcript analysis, not just, again, this is all students, right? So it's not just for our Gen Ed students, it's for students with IEPs as well. So again, it's really making sure everybody understands what a transcript looks like and what it should say. And then again, our focus on our math, the 15-day challenge, as well as focusing on those effective interventions and strategies like the defronted classroom. And here's some pictures of some of our school leaders that are taking part in the walkthroughs, our math walkthroughs throughout the district. And then I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to our school leaders so they can talk to you about their actions or next steps and what they're doing at their school site.
Okay, thank you. So one of the things that we're working on, working toward the growth or improvement, we have targeted professional development, and we're being specific. We're honing in on those areas of need. We're being specific to the grade level as well as individual teacher support. We're also providing targeted PLC support for each grade level, especially in areas where growth is needed. And we are making sure that we have tutoring, intensive interventions, and support that are helping our students that are struggling. So we are also focusing on those mathematical concepts as well as other areas that we need to grow in.
Okay, so to support with decreasing chronic absenteeism for African-American students, we are going to look more, look into having more opportunities to build positive relationships for them through, one, expanding extracurricular, through expanding extracurricular and leadership opportunities. We have several clubs on campus, and we want to expand that, and then also diving into the qualitative data and hearing their story, hearing the stories of families, hearing the stories of our scholars. It's always good to hear a story. And then also, the meet and greet approach. And then lastly, to increase and improve focus on restorative circles, that is extremely important, circling back to our MTSS team. It's important to focus on less of the punitive and more on the why, to dig into that and creating restorative reentry protocols. Thank you.
And for Vista Heights, we leveraged some of our Title I funds and assigned an ISP coordinator and clerk and formed an ISP system for each step of the process to ensure our students are able to recoup those attendance days. We focused on check-in, check-out with our social worker, counselors, and teacher mentors for targeted student group support, so leveraging those Tier Two, Three practices. And we rebuilt our SART team with appropriate team members and set a more consistent meeting time bi-weekly to provide outreach to support our chronically absent students in specific subgroups.
So for March, we want to expand our dual enrollment programs, I mean, our opportunities. So right now, we have over 25 students that are enrolled and do enrollment through the MVC. Also, growing our CTE pathways. I know we have grants that are going to be growing our CTE programs moving forward. Also, looking at increasing access for work-based learning, that's through the Arts Grant. We have two students that graduated last year with us that are now working through the Arts Grant, using those funds. And also, systemized and improved communications for students and parents so that they can clearly understand what college and career readiness looks like. And then increasing our A through G completion and career readiness indicators and exposing students to more career opportunities at March Mountain.
So I'm going to leave you with this. You know, we don't get to choose the students that we work with every day, but we do get to choose how we work with them. And behind me, you've just heard four exceptional school leaders and the work that they're doing each and every day to promote student access, to be supportive for post-graduation success. So thank you so much. Questions?
Trustee Carballo?
Yes, I have a question for Dr. Rice. It's about the limited participation in college-level coursework. I was just wondering why you think the reason is for that?
Well, a lot of our students, when they come, they're just doing the basic content area classes, so a lot of those students aren't taking AP classes. They're not looking for it, they just want to graduate. And so my goal as a principal and as our staff, we want to encourage those students to start taking some of those classes so that they're able to go to college, right? Go to junior college or whatnot. Because when you go to alternative ed, they really feel that they can't go to a university, but you can. So we're looking at better ways to give that student that mindset so they have an opportunity to do that.
And then I was wondering also, how do you tell apart the student that wants to continue that education and the one that really wants a career right away, a job? Like, how do you, like, set those apart? How do you identify which one am I going to encourage to put into these classes and which one am I going to help find this pathway?
Okay, so I encourage all kids. And so I'm always out in front of the school, so I know my students. And so as I know my students, I know what their capabilities are. And sometimes, they don't know what their capabilities are. So I try to give them that information and that courage to just stand on their own and do it the right way. And they do, and they know. And so that's what we do on our campus.
Thank you.
Ms. Leyva? I have similar questions as, but I was going to ask you, Dr. Rice, what is it that you think that as a district? I know you already said, you know, like, you don't have maybe, you know, the facilities right now to have those CTE programs that are needed at your school so that students can have more options, but as a board or as a district, what can we do so that we can, you know, support better the students that are attending March Mountain?
So I do have a meeting with Dr. Arce coming up pretty soon, just so we can share my vision on what I want that to look like. And then I think she'll present that to you guys so that you guys know exactly what we want and what we need at March Mountain.
And last thing, Dr. Rice, you know, I'm sorry. No, this is a compliment, because, you know, I have the opportunity, you know, to know a lot of, you know, parents, community members, and because of that, you know, I'm able to know a lot of students. And we were able to be at the CSBA with the student board members, and I would share with them that it's important to hear from the students what they need and what they like, how we doing, you know, adults, you know, on our job. And something that I hear from some of your students that I do know is that they feel that there's a different environment in your school, a more, you know, when it comes to students, it feels that you have more connection with them, which is really important to know, like you were saying, you know, to know your students, to see their needs, but also to see, you know, the capabilities that they have that, as you mentioned, they, most of the times, they don't see it, but they need somebody to guide them. So how are you able to do those connections? How do you approach them so they can trust you?
Well, a lot of times, we don't see potential in others, right? And we have to see that potential in our students. And sometimes, you know, their environment and their circumstances aren't always with it, it should be. And as a leader, it could be because they see us all the time, and we probably see them most of the time. I like to encourage our students to really always reach for the stars if they can, you know what I mean? And I give them the opportunity to do that by conversations, by what do you want to do? How can I help you? What resource can I give you to be better? And all these things for our, I mean, and I listen, having the opportunity to listen because sometimes, we think we know everything, and we don't. So it's just an opportunity to listen, just to give our students that opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm intrigued, just listening to you guys, man, you guys did a wonderful job. But, Dr. Rice, I wrote down some things, I'm not going to go over all of them, but all of you all are really in the same category. You guys, you love your students, and I can tell your students, students love you as well. The reason I was pointing out to Dr. Rice, and I'm sure, you know, being a man, those kids see you, and they see that build that you have. I know that influences them a little bit too, meaning, you better listen to what he's trying to tell you, because who knows? I'm not going to say you put your hands on him, but the reason I'm mentioning that because I knew a guy just like you when I was going to school. And you better believe, I'm not going to say I was scared of him, but I was scared. So in other words, the only thing I'm saying is, sometimes, it pays to be scared, because when you're scared, you're going to do your work. You don't want him to talk to you about anything. You don't want him to talk to you about anything except hello. So I appreciate all of you, but Dr. Rice, yeah, man. If I went, if I went to your school, you better believe I'm going to get my work. So thank you, man, for what you guys do. But ladies, look, you already know, we got mamas at home too. So you know, boy, you don't, don't make me look bad. Y'all know what I'm talking about. Thank you guys very much for, I mean, thank you, thank you very much for what you do. Appreciate you.
Yes, Ms. Williams and Ms. Smith, could you guys step forward? Because you both mentioned something that I'm curious about, and that's restorative justice, restorative practices. And if you could elaborate on how you do that at your individual schools?
So at Vista Heights, we really evaluated our discipline approach, our administration, our PBIS Tier One, Two, and Three teams met. And we recalibrated how we approached our discipline. And we looked at restorative practices first and alternatives to suspension. And we also looked at being proactive rather than reactive. So we put a lot of effort into getting things right when we know about them, right? Bringing students in, talking with them, involving parents, involving our school resources, like counselors, social workers, therapists. So a lot of that is what we pushed to make sure that we were able to decrease our suspension rate like we did.
So I just got kicked out of my class and I don't like my teachers. So what would happen at your school?
First thing, we want to get them in the hands of our counselor first, right? We don't want to necessarily send them to the administrator, discipline immediately. We want to find out what's going on, what barriers exist in the classroom? What is the issue with the teacher? And then we involve the parent to let the parent know what's going on. And then we create that bridge between teacher, parent, and student. And then we work on that with, with the student and the parent so that the student's not coming up for discipline, but we're trying to restore and refocus in the classroom.
I can add, echo the same thing that Mrs. Williams just stated. And it's about building a relationship Dr. Rice talked about. So when we are addressing discipline matters, the first thing is no longer punitive, punitive. It has to be restorative circles. And what that means is yes, it's looping in the counselor. Yes, it's looping in our site social worker. Yes, it's looping in our student success coach. Because if they always see an admin coming, then they're going to look at us in a negative manner. So we loop them in first. Yes, we are going to speak with them, but at the same time, we're speaking with them. We're not speaking at them. So it's important for us to sit down because it can make a difference. How I'm standing up here and the students are sitting down, that right there, I'm towering over them. So something as small as that is essential to supporting our scholars. So that's part of our restorative practices. And then once again, I echo what Mrs. Williams stated as well.
Ms. Williams, how's your dad doing?
He's fantastic. Eighteen years of retirement. Does somebody good, eighteen years.
Her dad was my first administrator that hired me. And you echo a lot of what your dad used to say. Dr. Rice? What's the key on zero suspensions, sir?
The key? The expectation. And when I say the expectation, that means telling the kids what the expectation is before they get to March. And when they understand the expectation, they'll follow.
Joe Clark, Batman Joe. Ms. Masuri? How's everybody doing over there?
Everything is well, very well. And I'm going to share that we also have zero suspensions. And I'm very excited about that. It has been a smooth transition from our Alessandra program coming over, being that they were hawks, I say you're now a cheetah hawk. So it has been wonderful. The students have been amazing. They have worked with our Gen Ed population, no problem. We have your typical things that happen, but it's been wonderful. But what I'm really proud of is that our staff continues to work as a team. It has not been any kind of, there's, I haven't had any issues, I'll say, just for lack of better words, where it's been a problem. It's been welcoming, it's been open arms. And I think students and families are feeling that way. And I think that's the reason why we've been able to have zero suspensions as well.
You guys are doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to go to slide 27 and ask about, under CCI, under transcript analysis, I don't, I, I think this is for you, Mr. Peoples. Is a transcript analysis, slide 27? Oh, no. Yeah, that one. Transcript analysis, are we also going over that with the students?
Yeah, so what's happening right now? The counselors should be going over their transcript analysis with the students. The, the most important piece about this transcript analysis is really having the staff understand what a transcript looks like and what classes count for A through G. That's hugely important. And so the counselors then take that, they look at their transcripts, they all get together in a room. All the counselors, you know, the high school counselors, district-wide get together. They look at all their transcripts, see if they miss anything, see if there's anything that they need to look at, update. That's a transcript analysis and then get what the kids on what their classes are. But a piece of this is bringing in other staff members also so they understand what that transcript looks like.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Dr. Rice, I'm going to ask you one question. You said you have 25 students in dual enrollment?
Yes, ma'am.
How did you, how'd you convince them to, to get into dual enrollment?
Well, Dr. Harsey convinced us. And it was a great opportunity to pick students that we knew would be able to take those challenging classes. But you know, we have students that come from the different comprehensives that are very bright kids. But, you know, they fell short within their freshman and sophomore year. By the time they get to us, it's almost like they're catching up. But we just want to give them an opportunity to take those classes as they transition into those junior colleges. And so it's just having those conversations and having the right people talk to them is what's really made a difference for us.
Do you, I just, do you notice any change within them after being in these classes?
Yes, we do because I mean, our student of the month, a student who had, came to us credit deficient, is now, he just registered at RCC for the automotive program. And so just being able to have, be in that dual enrollment class and now he understands that those classes are transferable classes, that's something that's great for him. And a lot of, right now, a lot of those students that are in those classes can see the light at the end of the tunnel, which is great. So thank you.
Awesome. I just want to commend all of you for being here and for all the great work that you're doing. I know you're just going to keep moving forward and we're going to have great results next time we see you. Thank you so much for all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. So, wow, I took a lot of notes and I have a lot of questions. I want to echo everything that my colleague said. But I'd like to bring Landmark up to the podium, please. First, I want to thank you for being so vulnerable because something that you stated was we saw that African-American children were disciplined at a disproportionate rate. That takes guts and courage. We see the data every day, but there hasn't been one principle that actually said those words. Not only did you say, and we have an action plan, and I appreciate that because the first thing we do is acknowledge what it, what it is and how we get there. Because, and how we help. Because I see that your suspension rates dropped, but you're like, but wait a minute, there's something going on there. So, so thank you for that. And do you have any plans to educate your staff or like, what does that look like?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking. So our MTSS, MTSS team, we always take information back to our leadership team. And then from leadership, we take it to our staff. So absolutely. So our MTSS team, we were going to do a deeper dive into the data. And we have been looking into the Kelvin survey in regards to how they feel about the culture and climate through their lens. So we've looked into that. And tho, those percentages are low across three, three time points. And then so, once we do that, we're going to, once again, we'll dive into, okay, out of those 41 African-American students, there's 133 from last year. Out of the 41, how many rolled over? And then how many went on to graduate? So how many rolled over? We're going to take a deep dive into that. And then we're going to dive into the stories because if we don't contact the parents, if we don't sit down and have a conversation with our scholars, then how are we going to identify the barriers? So everything is not always quantitative. We have to take a deeper dive into that data. So that's going to be our starting point. And then circling back to your question, how are we going to disseminate that information to staff? It's all about transparency. We take it from MTSS to leadership to staff.
Thank you. Amazing. And great job, by the way. Now, I didn't realize that Chapparal had zero suspensions. Chapparal to the podium, please. I feel like I shouldn't be sent to the podium, but anyway, thank you. Zero suspensions, wow, amazing. I hear everything that you're saying. One thing you mentioned was we looked at our teachers. There were some absences on the faculty side. How do you plan on assisting with bringing the faculty in or getting that, so we lose that gap in services when they are out?
So we have already, we have an onsite intervention tutor that stays. And this is outside of what's already been, being provided through AmeriCorps, through some of the other programs. And one thing that happens is because this person is well-known, she's built relationships with our students, she knows them. It's a benefit to us because if someday we hate to pull away from interventions, but that person can take over that class and continue the work that's already done because she's already communicating with teachers, she's already working with them. She collaborates with them already through the intervention. So she knows what the plan is in the classroom. It's a little bit easier transition for that to happen. We've also involved our PD specialists and we just really have honed in on that particular area just to say, okay, this is the area of need that we need to have support with. And we've basically dug deep, we've had grade level data chats with all of our grade levels. And we've basically looked at where we need the help. And so we're trying to help that team hone in on that focus because to see where we could have been, it's just, you know, to see other grade levels that were like rising and then one that would drop, we don't want that to happen again. And so basically it was an eye-opener for the teams to see that. But we are asking to embrace your data, but in a way that's not offensive or intimidating. I'll put it that way. So by embracing that data, they're able to understand it. And I think understanding the data is going to help them to improve their data.
Thank you. As you can see, I know we get our presentation and they do give us their action plans, but wow, they're doing, that, that PowerPoint slide does not give, you know, everything that they're doing. You guys are doing so much. So thank you. Vista Heights, can you step to the podium? Can you explain what SMART means? You said your, or your SART team?
It was SART team. So our school attendance review team. We noticed that that was not, including the members that we needed it to have. And those are the members that work directly with our parents, our students that do home visits. So we restructured that with an administrator. We involved our social worker. We had members of our Tier Two and Three PBIS team added to that. And we also added our ISP coordinator. So it's a whole team that's doing kind of the multifaceted work around attendance, chronic absenteeism, ISP. So that structure stays, stays consistent.
Thank you very much. March Mountain, please come to the podium. So I don't really have a question for you because I think when I heard your students speak earlier, it really resonated with me. I want to say thank you for having a culture of care for your students because it goes to show. So I had the opportunity to attend your graduation last year. I know it's the last year, but one thing that remained the same when I heard all the kids speaking, coming out, every time I talk to a kid that goes to March Mountain, I, I love that school. It, it's so amazing. So thank you for your hard work and, and dedication because every student feels like they matter. They may have come in feeling a way, but they're leaving feeling another way. And so I say that to say, you kind of set the blueprint. So we all need to kind of look at that and see what we can do to ensure that all of our kids are feeling that way when they walk into all of our schools. And then I'll share something about the board really quickly because we, it's Board Appreciation Month next month and we talked about these things a little bit earlier. So when I came to the district in 2021, I know Dr. Harsey will remember, the expulsion packs were like this high. I'm not joking. I can't tell you how many that this high is, but it seems like a whole lot of expulsions, right? I'm serious. And the suspension rate was 5%, 0% during COVID year, but 5% after that. Like, li, listen to this. It's already down to point six, point zero six, as mentioned. That's a tremendous job. I'm not saying that students shouldn't be disciplined, but what I hear from all of you is you guys are leaning into the why. Why is this happening? We want to support our kids' education. We want to know that it, it, there must be something going on and we want to, we want to work with you. Like you said, restorative practices, making sure they're in class, making sure they get the education that they need. So it's appreciated. And that came from the Board of Education. That was the directive, the community wanted, the board wanted it, and you guys delivered. You know, sometimes you just need to ask for, I'm sure all you guys wanted it before, but now it's at the forefront because it wasn't asked and you guys did it. And I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
President Clark, before they leave, I, our principals don't know this, but on Tuesday, we're going to be celebrating them. We did have the new dashboard release. And as you heard earlier, March Mountain is leading the charge in graduation across Riverside County. So thank you for that. But, yeah. For the first time ever, we are in green in our college and career indicators. That's huge. And a special surprise is for, there's something that kind of weighs on our schools sometimes. It's called CSI. And it's a, it's a comprehensive support and intervention. And it's a mandate from the California Department of Education. And for four years, Landmark Middle School has been considered a CSI school. And just in designation, CSI is the highest level of needing and support. Then there's ATSI, then there's TSI, and then there's no status. Landmark went from CSI all the way down to TSI for the first time. Just wanted to take the opportunity because that's a big deal. Thank you.
Dr. Rubakava?
We say this all the time and, and we talk about it in leadership, that this is an opportunity not to not only showcase the wonderful work that's happening, but also to own the work that we need to continue to do. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being part of the team.
And now we are on to item K2, another presentation to the board. This action item and presentation on, an action item and presentation on the 2025, 2026 First Financial Interim Report. And you're coming up, sorry, Ms. Lopez. And I'd like to invite Ms. Lopez to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Well, good evening. Board of Education, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Rubakava, cabinet members of the audience, Susana Lopez, Chief Business Official. And this evening, very excited to present to you our first interim financial report. And I, you know, the fact that we're coming after a presentation of just amazing things happening at our school sites, I think that's one of the reasons why in our office, we want to make sure that the information that's provided, all the resources, are first of all, properly allocated to our sites so that the sites can continue to do great things, but also making sure that we have accurate information and that as we're looking to the out years is that we have budgets that show sustainability throughout so that we can continue to do those great things. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. Look, Mr. Peoples turned it off for me. We're going to get right to the interim financial reporting of what this is. And this is a report that will come to the board at least twice a year. Our first interim, which is what we're presenting tonight, will cover our information through October 31st. And that's one of the things that sometimes gets a little bit tricky to communicate the message because literally on October 31st, we have a cutoff. And then it takes staff about five to six weeks to put all of this information together, to work on the projections so that we can present a report to you by December 15th. Our second interim report will cover through January 31st and will be brought to the board by March 15th. And then, when needed, a third interim goes through April 30th. This is really the first time that we are able to provide a snapshot, not only to our county, but to the state and all of our stakeholders in regards to all of what our financial status is. So even though July 1st was almost six months away now, right? Um, we need to realize that this report will encompass those changes of the things that we knew through October 31st. And then the second component is that we are projecting what things will look like in, on June 30th. And that's why it's important that we have periodic reports throughout the year because assumptions will change, right? Things will change throughout the year and we need to make sure that we continue to provide those updates. When it comes to certification, there's three different certifications that a district could have. Um, the first certification, the best certification is positive. Uh, this ensures and, and states that the district will be able to meet its financial obligations, not only for current year, but also for the two subsequent years. Uh, why do we talk about subsequent years and financial projections? Is that we have Assembly Bill 1200, AB 1200, uh, that was passed and it requires that all financial reports include three years. So you're always looking at current year and two subsequent years. A qualified certification would mean that the district may not be able to meet its financial obligations for the current year or the two subsequent years. And then a negative is that the district is unable to meet the obligations for that remainder of the first year. So this evening, I am happy to report that we are recommending a positive certification for our financial, uh, first interim report. Um, the key thing about a positive certification is that this is a certification that we will maintain until our next financial reporting period. So between now and second interim, we remain positive and it's only at those times when certifications can change. Taking a look at our enrollment, uh, this provides us a 10-year history of our enrollment. And when you take a look at the average, um, in the past, we looked at eight years of, of average decline, but we have to remember that a couple of things changed a couple of years ago. Uh, one, that our trends changed after the pandemic, right? And then secondly, we also had the introduction of really a new grade, um, our transitional kindergarten, TK. Uh, this is really the first year where now we are at the final, um, birthdate mark for enrollment. And so, moving forward, there's no additional changes to that date, uh, for enrollment into TK. And so, when you look at the last three years, that average decline has been 455 students. The decline from 2425 to 2526 was actually 514 students, which is a little bit higher than what we actually projected and what we budgeted for. So that's something that we're taking a closer look at. And we're going to continue to monitor because we don't know if this is going to determine or set a new trend, right? Or if this is just something that is happening for, for one year only. Uh, one thing that I will, um, let you know is that typically, our district has a history of growing between the first day of school through winter break. And then usually after winter break, we start to see the decline. This is the first time in the six years that I've been here where we're already seeing a decline and we're not yet at winter break. Our enrollment, actually today was already, I believe, 30,380, which is about 50 students already below where we were on seabeds that first Wednesday in October. So that is something that is a little bit different, a little concerning, but again, something that we need to continue to monitor. And, and working to, to determine the cause of that. These numbers are based on that first Wednesday in October. That is what is known as our CalPads Day. That is what is certified. Um, and this will continue to be the number that we use when comparing enrollment from year to year. The two subsequent years, 2627, 2728, right now, just based on com- internal conversations that we've had about what do we use to budget for the out-years, we are going to be projecting a decline of 475 students in each of those two years. In addition to enrollment, we have to take a look at what other assumptions so that we can continue to, to build our budget and our multi-year projections. And so, uh, probably the next biggest factor would be COLA. And we have, uh, for the last couple of years now, have outlined two rows that are indicators of COLA. We have the statutory COLA, which is the number provided by the state. Uh, we, as we give budget updates, we give updates as to what the governor is projecting for COLA. Uh, for 2526, you can see that number is 2.3%. Uh, the projection for 2627, 3.02, 3.42. These numbers were projected as of May. Um, you might have maybe at CSBA, I know that a, a lot of the, um, business conferences, a lot of the discussion has been at that come January, when the governor releases his update to the 2627 budget, that COLA will not be that high. And so, um, we have taken a stance and for 2627, we are only budgeting a 2% COLA and then continuing with that 0% trend in 2728. Again, once we have more information, we could potentially make updates to that number. Uh, one thing do want to highlight, our unduplicated pupil percentage uh, has been a percent that has rebounded. Uh, we had shared with the board several years back, once universal meals were implemented, um, as a district, we weren't having as much success collecting the, that information on the annual information update, uh, to be able to have true numbers. I think as a district, we are really good, now over 96% collection. Um, our administrators, our school sites, um, have really, uh, been able to determine what the best method is at, at their individual sites to get that done. Uh, dozens of sites actually have 100% completion, which is really good. And so, we know that this unduplicated pupil percentage number is going to be pretty consistent, we hope. And so, you can see there in the neighborhood of 87%. Um, the enrollment, and we've already talked about. On the attendance side, uh, we're still projecting the 92% um, because again, this is a, a trend that we will see. We usually start with the higher 94, 93 percentages for the first semester. But again, our attendance is actually calculated and certified, um, right around spring break. Our eighth month of attendance is what is known as the Period Two or P2 attendance. Um, and typically, it's closer to a 92 and a half, 93% range. So we will again, monitor that. And then you see the factors for mandated block grant as well as lottery. So then we take a look at expenditures on the next slide and the assumptions that we use here are a step-in column of one and a half percent. What is step-in column? It's the cost of what our salary schedules increases, build-in increases are. Uh, so assuming that all of your employees stay intact, um, it's an average of one and a half percent that you see in salary increase as they move across on the salary schedules. As, in regards to our retirement rates, our STIRS, which is our state teachers' retirement system, which most of our certificated staff, uh, that's the retirement system for them. It's a 19.10, that percent is holding steady, which is great because we're not seeing increases. However, on the classified su- side or the public employees' retirement system, you are seeing that we are projecting, um, some small increases uh, from 2526 to 2627 and then almost a 1% increase to that rate. So, in addition to the salary cost, um, there is the retirement and all of the fringe benefits that, um, we, we have to add. And, and so you can see that the higher these percentages get, the higher the number or the cost it is of personnel. So as we start to focus now on just the big picture and, uh, here on this slide, you can see this is our unrestricted revenues and we'll take a look at the table and then a visual that just shows you. But over 95% of our unrestricted revenues are tied to local control funding formula sources, which is attendance and unduplicated percentage. And that's why we always stress about making sure that we monitor the trends that are going on um, and, and working to make sure that those numbers are accurate. So from adopted budget, uh, we now have an unduplicated pupil percentage for the year. And so, as we update that, and then also had a revision to last year's attendance report. So those two changes account for the increase, projected increase to our LCFF sources. Uh, federal revenues, this is unrestricted money. This is money with no strings attached and so we don't typically see federal revenues. Usually those monies come with restrictions. Uh, you do see, uh, we do have a small amount of state revenues on the unrestricted side and minimal changes projected for state revenues. And then local revenues, under local revenues is where you would see things like, um, one-time grants, uh, interest would probably be the biggest component. Any revenues that we collect, uh, for things like rentals, use of facilities and so forth would be captured there. So overall, our total revenues are projected to increase by $6.9 million, uh, for 2526. And then here's a visual. And you can see that 95% of LCFF revenues make up our entire revenues on the unrestricted side. And, and that's why we just always, always make sure that we're focused and in tune to what is happening in regards to enrollment, attendance, and our unduplicated pupil percentage. So as we shift to the expenditures, um, we did not have a lot of updated information as of October 31st when it came to expenses. And so you can see that there are some variances on the salaries and that's simply the fact that we were projecting in June. Um, and we've now hired positions, new folks have been hired, some folks have left. And so, you will see some salary adjustments. You will see us accounting for savings from vacancies. Um, the biggest change is on the services and operating expenditures and that's because we increased, uh, the amount of use of facilities that we are charging for some of our programs. Um, but overall, only projecting expenditures to change by about $2 million, going from 388 million to 386 million. At second interim, um, is, and we had shared this in the, in the Friday memo, at second interim, after we have approval of our AB 1200s for these salary increases, you're going to see greater variances because we would have incorporated all those costs at that time. Right now, it's only designated in the reserves. And when you look at the breakdown of expenditures, um, you can see that on the unrestricted side, um, you have almost close to 90% of your expenditures are tied to people. And you see the breakdown there of certificated salaries, 41%, classified 17, management 6, employee benefits 25. And that's why sometimes it's really difficult to make adjustments without touching personnel, um, because of that. If we then focus on our other sources and uses, um, we have two items. We have first our transfers out. These are funds that are transferred out from the unrestricted general fund to other funds. In this case, that transfer out is to our self-insurance fund. And you can see there's just a slight increase between adopted budget and first interim. On the contribution side, uh, the contributions is made up of two significant programs. We have a contribution to special education. We've had lots of discussions in the past and understand that we are still, um, being shorted funds at the federal level. And so, it forces districts to pick up that difference and pick up that cost to be able to meet the needs of that program. And in addition to that, uh, because we receive state funds for facility projects, we are required to set aside 3% of our unrestricted, um, expenditures, set aside for a routine repair maintenance program. And so, we have a $73.3 million contribution to special ed, 19.2 million contribution for routine repair maintenance. And both those dollar amounts make up the 92.5 million that you see there under first interim contributions. So overall, not a lot of changes at first interim. Again, um, it's still early in the year and so we'll have a, a better estimate at second interim. On this slide, this is our multi-year projections, uh, for unrestricted. And we've broken down the numbers for 2526. We broke down the $489 million in revenues, 386 million in expenditures, 101 million of other sources and uses transferred out to either restricted or other funds. And so, for 2526 only, you can see that we are not deficit spending. There's no red there. Um, and so, our reserve or projected beginning balance goes from 120 million to 122. For 2627 and 2728, uh, you can see though, that there are deficit spending amounts. We did include some information on, in the Friday memo also in regards to the deficit spending. But one of the items that we discussed is that, um, we are going to give you information in advance so that you can see, for example, the one-time expenditures that are built into the budget. Because when they are one-time expenditures, even though it looks like you're deficit spending for that year, it's not a structural deficit, right? It's not an ongoing problem. And so, I think by breaking out, uh, some of those one-time funds, it's going to be a little bit easier to, to really understand what is that true deficit amount that we have each and every year. Um, a reminder that in 2728, that deficit spending amount of 30 million is really high, but remember, we're not building in COLAs, right? Um, and so, all of that is contributing, uh, to that. Uh, again, at second interim, you're going to have, I think, a little bit more accurate information once we're able to move up some of those items that have been designated in the reserves to get a better picture. So now, shifting gears and we're going to forget about unrestricted and now take a look at our restricted general fund. Our restricted general fund is simply that we receive money that's restricted, money that can only be spent on specific items. Uh, you can see that there are no revenues for local control funding formula because that is only on the unrestricted side. However, you're seeing now we have a larger amount of federal revenues. Uh, we are projecting a $4.8 million increase in federal revenues. That's not really new money. Uh, most of that money is Title I money that was not spent in the prior year. The way that Title I works is that it's, uh, referred to as a deferred revenue account, which means that if you don't spend the money, you can't recognize the revenues. And so, if you remember when we presented an audited actuals and we were seeing reductions in revenues, it's not that we were losing money, it's simply that the money wasn't spent. And so, now that we are planning to hopefully spend the money this year, we would recognize the revenues. Under other state revenues, you're seeing a, a pretty significant variance from 101 million to 130 million. Uh, a couple of things have changed from the time we adopted the budget. Um, one big thing is that the state did fund the professional development block grant. That's almost $9 million for the district. Uh, this is, uh, money that we have several years to spend. But again, all of the money will be received in current year and so, it's going to increase your revenues and then increase that, uh, reserve until you spend the funds. Uh, that was the biggest component. We also received community schools grant. And so, that, those revenues have been incorporated into our budget now as well as increase to programs such as C-TIG. So, um, again, first interim is, is really that first opportunity that we have to account for some of these new grants, which are always welcome. And then on the local revenue, you just see a slight increase, um, of 1.8 million for some, uh, local grants. Um, I believe these are the, um, contracts that we have, um, for our wellness, in our wellness program. So we've recognized those as well. So overall, $35 million projected increase in projected revenues. Because we're receiving additional revenues now, we're going to be able to account for additional expenditures. Um, oh, got ahead of myself first. Here's the breakdown on this pie graph. And you can see that on the restricted side, 76% of this budget are state revenues, 20% federal, um, 0% LCFF and small for local. Here we are on the expenditures. So now that we've accounted for more grants, you can see that we have expenditures increasing, right? So as new programs are introduced, uh, the carryover has now been allocated. We've worked with our school sites, our de- departments. As they are budgeting for these new revenues, they, it increases our expenses. And so, you can see that we have corresponding increases on their expenditure side of $31.3 million. And so you can see that we have corresponding increases on their expenditure side of thirty-one point three million dollars. And here's the breakdown of expenditures on the restricted side. And different than unrestricted, you can see that the amount that is spent on personnel. Is only slightly over fifty percent and the reason why is that first, we have a lot of one-time monies, right? And you don't want to spend one-time monies on ongoing costs. And secondly, a lot of these grants actually have restrictions where you cannot use it on personnel. And so there's a lot, um, higher budgets now devoted to books, supplies, services and and so forth and not as much to people. And on the restricted side is where you see the positive side of the contribution. So the money that is being moved from unrestricted for special education and routine restricted maintenance program. Is now being shown as additional revenues here on the restricted side. And when you take a look at our multi-year projections for our restricted side, you can see, and I've mentioned this before. Um, the amount of revenues um is higher than it usually is and these reserves are much higher than they've been. And that's because we have an influx of one-time funds in this. So if you look at current year, we're projected to deficit spend eight point six million, sixteen million and twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven. And twenty-seven, twenty-eight, nineteen million. And look at that reserve, a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars beginning of twenty-five, twenty-six. Of that amount, between six grants and these are one-time grants and they were outlined also in that Friday memo. Those six grants alone total fifty-three million dollars. And so money that we received upfront, that we have multiple years to spend. And so you're going to continue to see this deficit spending on the restricted side for at least uh four to five more years. And in summary, when you take a look at, at our ending fund balance. Um, again, this yellow gold is our restricted and you can see going back to eighteen, nineteen and nineteen, twenty. That's what the corrector, characteristics were of restricted funds, they were funds that you received for one year and you would spend. And so you didn't have a lot of reserves when it came to grants, right, and restricted funds. And then look at what the blue was, much higher and and then we saw that shift really a couple of years after COVID. Once we started receiving all of the one-time funds and it's just really inflating our ending fund balance on the restricted side. Um, and then you can see that on the blue side, on the unrestricted side. Uh, those percentages are lower and you can see that for twenty-five, twenty-six, again. About an eighteen percent reserve, but because of the expenditures that will be projected to come. And the fact that there's a zero percent cola and the out years uh looking or projecting an eleven point five percent. Reserve in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And so our next steps is in January, we have a governor's budget workshop. Where we will receive updated information and and we will take those uh, that information and take a look at our assumptions. And make any changes that might be needed. Also in January, we will be presenting to you our audit report. Um, and so we will have our external auditors here for that presentation. As well as I want to point out, you will have AB twelve hundreds being presented at that January board meeting. And then January thirty-first is a cutoff for second interim, so we will update all of our financials and present that report to you at the March. Board meeting. In May, we have our May revision and then June presenting twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. Um, public hearing as well as adoption at that time, so. Just uh before I wrap up, I just want to thank um Mr. Lauda who's there in the back. Um, he's been leading the business services team and I, you know, this is a lot of work. And in addition to that, we're also working on a, you know, small project of a conversion of our financial systems. Um, so there's a, a lot going on, but um, he's got a great team of folks that are working. And so just kudos to that entire accounting team, payroll team, payables team, everybody that's contributing to this information. So I want to thank you and I'm open to answer any questions.
Thank you kindly for the great presentation, thank you, Mr. Lauda and thank you for working on that conversion. I'll start with uh Isabella Carballo.
Um, I have no questions.
Thank you so much, Tracy Leva.
Well, um, I think you were pretty clear about everything that you explained about budgeting. We have our discussions in private too, so that really helps. But my biggest worry is the declining of the students and we have no control over that. And um. Even though you showed over there, um, you know, with the slides, the impact, um. How about would that really be, you know, like for us? If they keeps, you know, because um, like you were explaining, you know, like usually the, the, the declining, you know, comes after this. Winter, you know, break and now it's been, you know, happening earlier than that, so.
A lot of monitoring, I mean, the good thing is that funding wise, um, we are funded on the, on the greater of, right? Current year or prior year, so it, there's a built-in protection to, to allow you to do that. But, you know, one of the things, and, and this is where I, I, hopefully, you know, when we continue to advocate. Um, we're still seeing us funded on attendance, but we have to budget on enrollment, right? That's one thing. And I think you're going to hear more of this push because we're not the only district that's declining. And quite honestly, I think our decline is percentage-wise is probably one of the lowest. If, there's only, I believe, three districts now in Riverside County out of the twenty-three that are growing. Um, and the rest are pretty much declining and and so I think it's going to be an issue that's going to be definitely discussed at the state level. Because you're seeing that up and down and so what we can continue to do is continue to stay on top of the projections, right? Um, we noticed if, at, at adopted budget, we were budgeting decline of three seventy-five, you see that we've increased that to four seventy-five. So we're not waiting for things to change. We're being proactive about incorporating those changes and then hope it's wrong, right? Hope we don't decline that much. Number one, number two is all the, you know, all the, the programs that you, you're hearing and the discussions that we have. I mean, there's a way to hopefully make our schools to where folks from other districts are going to want to come. And, and so, you, you know, just continuing to work with student services on, on what is happening with transfers. Um, and, and monitoring that, because there was a point in time where we were losing a lot more students, I think those numbers are much slower. And that's as a result of, you know, the, the programs and the work being done here, so I think we need to continue to do that great work. Of showcasing and, and branding, um, because you're right, we can't control who's buying the homes. Or we can't control um things like that, but we can control the quality of our schools. And how, the programs that are offered and how safe people feel, you feel and, and that's all we can do. But I think it's going to be discussions that, that are going to need to take place at the state level. Because we're not the only ones that are going through this.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
I, I just have one quick question, when we talked about attendance, I don't think I, I understood that one very well. Are you saying that our attendance is, is good, which is why we, where, where we are, where we are right now? Or can you?
Our, our attendance has been improving the last couple of years, so we've seen that increase in attendance, which is great. But I think we can continue to, continue to increase, right? Um, typically, the pre-COVID attendance rate for Unified School District was ninety-five percent. And Dr. Rualgaba has mentioned that target of ninety-five percent, you can see that some of our schools are there. But as a district as a whole, we're not there and so we still need to continue to, to advocate for that. And to put some effort in, in, in doing so and I know that um, we have ongoing discussions. Uh, training of attendance clerks as well, just to figure out.
Yeah.
Um, things, um, just a great effort with the Saturday school.
Yeah.
Right, Saturday innovation camps, independent study contracts and so just taking.
Okay.
On opportunity with as many programs as we can, but um, continue to monitor that as well.
Okay, that, that was the only question I had, thank you very much, very good report, I, I, I love hearing from you. Because you always have some good news, but that attendance thing got me on that one, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Williams?
Yes, um, when I look at the breakdown uh of students. K, K eight is one price and nine twelve is another. So what percentage of our students are nine twelve versus the K eight, you know, that make up our, our, our enrollment?
Our K eight percentage is greater right now and the good thing about that is that um. It's not, it's not just your attendance, right? So you look at it and you look at the grade spans, but remember that there's specific grade levels that you get additional funding for. So for example, transitional kindergarten, there's the attendance factor, but then there's add-on components for that. Um, there's additional uh revenues accounted for the high school grade span, nine to twelve. That makes up for the old CTE programs, just because the cost of educating a high school student is higher. Um, so there's, there's those components, but the thing that we're monitoring right now is that we have this bubble going through our schools. It's only at the elementary level where the declining enrollment has really been impacted. Our high schools haven't seen that impact yet.
So what grades do we have the bubble in?
The bubble right now is in grades four through about grade seven, our middle school started to fill it this year. It's probably another one or two years before the high schools really start to see the decline.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Lopez.
I just want to ask, um, I know we talked about uh the Aqua Bella development. What, when is that projected to be done or started or?
So there's a, there's a long history regarding um the preservation of a specific species of critter. That is protected and so that delayed the project. I think they finally settled that suit and they're going to start breaking ground. We're being told it's going to be about thirty-five hundred homes.
Is Jake here yet? No, oh, a thousand? Fifteen thousand.
But only thirty-five hundred for the area right here by Moreno Elementary.
Oh, the closest one, yes.
One, but yeah, so that's still, we're thinking maybe five to ten years away in terms of full. Because that also includes the shopping center um and all of that area as well. So we're looking at quite a ways before we see that. I think the, the thing that's concerning about the new construction is, for example, just here, right down, down Alessandra, we have that construction. We're not seeing kids from those communities because those are dual-income, no-kid homes. Families who, we used to be a more affordable community for families, but even now Moreno Valley has not become that. In just the two years that I've been here, when I, when we, when I first started, homes at the high end were in the five fifty, six hundred thousand. Now some of these homes are selling for eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars, it's gotten pretty expensive.
Yeah.
So even though we're seeing more housing, we're not going to, we're not necessarily confident that we're going to see the kids attached to that new home development.
And if I can just mention, not everyone is having kids either, so I, I think that's also down. So I don't know, um, but I just want to thank you for the presentation and your team, I, this is hard work. And especially going through uh the transition of systems, so thank you. And then, you know, wrapping up bargaining and all that, thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lopez, I look forward to your second interim report and I'm happy that we have a positive, so.
Thank you.
So now we are moving on to item L, the consent agenda. Um, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion.
I think we need to approve the report, right?
Thank you, it was an action item, thank you so much. Um, before we move on to the consent agenda, can I please have a motion? Um, to certify the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six first financial interim report as presented.
So move.
I'll second.
Thank you kindly, Ms. Luna.
And Leva.
Mm-hmm. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carballo.
Aye.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye, this motion has passed six, six approves. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, um, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to co, to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia, could you, could you call for the vote?
Student Board Member Carballo.
Aye.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye, this motion carries six zero. We are now moving on to M, action items. And for our first action item, uh, we have the approval of the second reading and adoption of board policy. And administration regulation five one three one eight, mobile community, uh, mobile communication device policy. Dr. Arce.
Thank you very much, President Clark, um, as mentioned in the first reading in our last board meeting. This board policy has been shared with our union leaders, um, it has been provided. Uh, we have not received any feedback in terms of uh any concerns. So as far as the voice of the students, the voice of the parents, the voice of our community and our staff. Um, we believe that this board policy as aligned with CSBA is ready for approval and we're seeking that from you.
Any questions?
Um, just a comment, um, I had like a few parents reach out to me. They have kids that have an IEP and they want to know, um, you know, how they can make sure that the kids that are needed of having their devices. Um, you know, will not get in trouble, we know who do they need to talk, but what are we thinking about um promoting? Or like um, to inform the parents, the process of them, you know, to communicate that to their principals.
With the approval of the policy, we're going to then engage in the communication plan to inform um the community of the policy. And then the opt-out or the opt-in opportunities for them to continue to have their phones as either medically necessary or necessary as a result of an IEP.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Roca. Any more questions? Can I get a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of board policy and administrative regulation five one three one eight? The mobile communication device policy as presented? Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Ms. Claudia, call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carballo.
Aye.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye, this motion is passed six zero, moving on to M two, business action items. Um, consideration for adoption of the resolution number two zero two five dash two six. Dash forty-one of the Board of Education of Moreno Valley Unified School District. Approving the annual and five-year report fees report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. In compliance with Government Code Section six six zero zero six and six six zero zero one. Mrs. Lopez?
Yes, thank you, President Clark. Uh, this is our annual resolution where we are presenting to you the report. That is a summary of our developer fees and so you, this report is really two parts. The first part is the annual report, which outlines uh what the fees were that were collected for our residential and commercial development. So on page two, for example, of the report, there's a summary of the rates. Um, and you can see that we, for the year, collected one point four million dollars. And as well, you can see the interest that was earned as well as the expenditures. Um, for an ending fund balance as of June thirtieth for four point four million. Uh, the second part to this report is the five-year annual report. Which entails and really is a summary of what is the intent, how will these funds be used? And for us as a district, um, we have a lot of facility projects going on. And so typically you're seeing that um our Fund Twenty-Five is used many times as a match for some of our projects. Um, just a reminder, when we receive state grants for our facility projects, we still are responsible for a match. And so many times we look for this Fund Twenty-Five to be the match. So you can see that beginning on page six of the report is where uh some of the intended uses will be for these funds. And you can see that we've outlined the project names. I also just want to point out that this report was made available to the public on November twenty-fourth. Which is one of the requirements about having it be public um certain number of days prior to approval, so we've met those uh conditions.
Thank you kindly, any questions? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you kindly, Ms. Claudia, call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carballo.
Aye.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye, this motion is passed six zero. We are now moving on to. We are now moving on to B, the approval of authorization of parent and community booster clubs for the period from January first, two thousand twenty-six to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, thank you, President Clark. Um, because our approval is for the calendar year, we are seeing a high number of requests. And are happy to report that we actually have these six booster clubs that have met all of the requirements prior to January first. So that they can be in operation um, right away. And so this evening, we are recommending approval of the Mustang Kappa Booster, the Viking Booster Club, the Hidden Springs Elementary Booster Club. The Valley View Aquatics Booster, the Ramona Terrier Booster Club, and the Canyon Springs High School Band and Pageantry Booster. Um, again, these six clubs, booster clubs are all in compliance and have met the requirements, submitted all the paperwork needed. To be authorized uh, to operate for the calendar year two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you kindly, any questions?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the authorization of the parent?
I'll make the motion.
Fantastic, thank you, Ms. Lopez. Fantastic, I appreciate you. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye, this motion carries. Moving, um, six zero, thank you. Moving forward to item C, the approval of the second reading and adoption of administrative regulations. New administrative regulation three three one one four, procurement and technology equipment and administrative re- regulation three four four zero. Inventories deletion of the following policies. Board policy thirty-two zero zero, income. Board policy thirty-three fifteen, relation to, excuse me, relations with vendors. Board policy three three six zero, vendor relations and deletion of an administrative regulation three four zero point one. And classification of expenditures. Uh, Ms. Lopez?
Yes, thank you, President Clark. Uh, we have a handful of, of changes um, and recommendations. These are all second reading, so I'll quickly summarize them. Uh, the first is a recommendation to delete board policy thirty-two hundred. This is entitled income. Uh, this was a policy that was unique to our district and not really following CSBA policy. And if I can just add that I know there was a request at the first reading to provide the backup. And so all of that was included in the Friday memo. Um, so I apologize for that confusion. The second one is a new administrative regulation three three one one point four, procurement of technology equipment. And so updating to align with CSBA policy in regards to how we go about procuring technology equipment, the software. Um, telecommunications equipment and so forth. Um, it talks about guidelines for like the competitive bidding as well. And so we wanna make sure that we have as many options as possible and wanna be in alignment with CSBA. Um, also wanna mention that referencing and including the public contract code for that one. Uh, board policy three three one five, relations uh, with vendors. This again is a recommended deletion. This was again, a policy that was unique to our district and there was wording included in other um, policies, which we had provided the backup for. Um, similar to board policy three three six zero, vendor relations. Uh, this was a one-sentence policy that again, was just unique to our district. Um, however, there is wording, existing wording in thirty-six hundred, dealing with consultants. That would be um, more in alignment with CSBA. Uh, administrative regulation thirty-four zero one point one, classification of expenditures. Again, this was uh, something unique to our district, but already have language included in regards to district assets and accounts. In thirty-three hundred, expenditures and purchases as well. And then the last one is an update to administrative regulation three four four zero, inventories. Uh, this actually came about because as we're working on this conversion, um, our assets is actually a big component of our financial conversion system. And so we needed to make sure that we had the adequate wording and updated to be able to clarify like what the thresholds are for inventory. Um, and then also including language related to physical inventory procedures. That is something that we're gonna be looking to do um, here and then, and, and over the summer. Um, and so all of these items have been shared with our bargaining units and we've received no feedback from the first reading.
Thank you kindly, any questions? Thank you, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Leva, you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye, this motion carries six zero. Now moving on to our final um, action item with human resources. We are moving on to A, the approval of the new certi, uh, certified job descriptions. ELOP program specialist and itinerant assessment and intervention teacher. Dr. Verdi?
Thank you, President Clark. Uh, as you mentioned, we are presenting two new certificated job descriptions this evening. The first is the ELOP program specialist and under the supervision of the Director of Enrichment and Expanded Learning. This position will help to oversee the development, coordination, and management of ELOP activities across the district at all levels, including education and literacy support. Enrichment, including but not limited to uh, VAPA, sports, and esports, as well as intercession offerings and related showcases and events. We have vetted this job description with our JFMC committee as well as our partners with MVEA. With the itinerant assessment and intervention job description, uh, this one this evening, board members is under the di, direction of the Director of Elementary Instruction. And this position would play a key role in supporting student academic success by administering our reading screener. Uh, as well as our analyzing results and providing targeted reading remediation based on that data. Uh, again, this has also been vetted by JFMC and we worked with MVA on the development of this job description as well.
Any questions? No. Have a second. Thank you so much, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Luna.
I'll second.
Ms. Leva, beat you to it. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye, this motion carries six zero. Would, set. Um, now we are going to move on to item N, future agenda topics, and I'll start with you, trustee Carvalho.
Thank you. Um, I just have one and it's about um, hi, college and career in high school. Um, so uh, we look to encourage college and career engagement. Um, but I say we start earlier with that. Um, especially starting in middle school, even to elementary school. And how can we do that? Um, we could do that through having our high school CTE courses and all those uh, programs and clubs. Either going to these elementary schools or middle schools. Um, and encouraging them, showing them what they do. Um, so like for robotics, they could take their, what they make or engineering, they could show them things that they do. Um, and automotive, like um, the elementary school or middle school students can come visit our high schools. And see what are, what are they doing at this level? Um, at their school, so then they could be interested. Because they're not gonna just um, know and just from hearing words and seeing presentations by counselors. They're gonna want to do something by seeing it and wanting to be hands-on. And that can show students um, like what, what they, they, it can give them something to look forward to. Um, as they're going into middle school and going into high school. So then they could decide what they want to do and find their passion early on. So then um, they could have that decision instead of making it their last years of high school. But, thank you.
Trustee Leva?
Um, I talked about this with um, Dr. Roca. As you may know, we having the Shine Awards coming, you know, up. And we have the Romelio Ruiz Award. And I talked to Dr. Roca. I don't know if you wanna bring it up or? And I'm proposing.
The honor is all yours, please bring it up.
And I'm proposing, you know, because um, we have seen his dedication, not only. This person serving, you know, um, in the armed forces and being a veteran. But you know, he has also served at the board for a long time. So you know, Ms. Luna knows about it too, you know, that we were trying to, to recognize his effort. I don't know what he's gonna say, well, I kinda know he's gonna say no, but I think it's, you know, fair enough. That we have the CJ Johnson Award at the Shine Awards to recognize, you know, that. Parent or community member that has effortlessly, you know, worked so hard and, and support our students.
I know it's an excellent idea.
I thought I heard my name and I'm thinking, geez, I want somebody else.
So with consensus of the board, we would like to add a CJ Johnson Award to the Shine recognition for one distinguished community member. That exemplifies the spirit, enthusiasm, and charisma of Mr. Johnson.
Yes, definitely.
There you go. Why didn't you tell me about this before?
Because that would be a violation of the broad egg, Mr. Johnson. So we can't, we can't do that.
Yeah.
At the very, I don't know what to say, what am I supposed to say, man? You want me to say thank you? Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Doctor, uh, there it is, I'm saying thank you. That's my buddy right there.
Fantastic. Well, Mr. Johnson, since we're, we're all, you're so awesome and you have an award named after you, would you like to add any future agenda topics?
Hey, you guys caught me off guard, I can't even think that far.
Okay. No worries.
Agenda, uh, topics, no. Um, I think, I think we're doing a, a great, a great job already. But there is one thing uh, that, uh, how do I say it? That I wish I would see more of. The Friday night football games, I just don't understand it. I don't know, Dr. Arce, what we can do about it. Uh, we've got four high schools, four teams. At, and we right here in town, when we playing at home. I mean, you can sit anywhere you want to and that should not be. I know I'm looking at you because if I look at uh, Dr. Verdi, he, he's gonna say, well, yeah, I don't live here. But anyway, my, 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 but I'm, I'm joking around, but my whole point is uh. I, I, I would like to see us do a lot better. I don't know what to do. But on Friday nights, we should have more people in attendance. Maybe we'll put some flags up, you know, on, on the street corners or something, but we need to do something to get the folks out, out here. As we have some fine kids out there every Friday doing a wonderful job, coaches doing a wonderful job. And you look, here, I'm gonna close by saying this. You have two schools in the same city. I don't understand why both stands on full. The visiting team live right here. There's nobody there. I don't get it. So I, uh, I, I, I just need some help on that one. I need some help on that one. I'd like to see us do a lot better. We do a pretty good job here. We have some great coaches, great players. But by golly, I'm speaking on behalf of the players. If I live here and the other team live here, we should be full. I know this is not Texas, but it's California and we need to do a better job. That's all I have.
Thank you kindly, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Williams?
I'm gonna pick up uh, where Mr. Johnson left off. And uh, I've mentioned this uh, to the superintendent. Just like we had Valley View uh, performing the last two Fridays. Uh, I wanna make a suggestion that we, we bring in the other football teams. Uh, I know it's difficult with CIF, but to support Valley View with the other high school football teams and their parents. Because we have got to bring a more communal spirit to our activities and athletics. And if we got our students to support each other in their endeavor to compete. I think it would be a really, really good process and maybe address what you're saying. Um, I know during the, the league, we can do some things to get students in the, and, and parents in the game. But. We've, we've had some strife in our community over athletics. And I think we need to abolish all of that strife and get everybody to cheer for the home team. Period. And uh, the, what we're confronted with is the fact that. All of these cities used to be one high school's towns. That's no longer the case. But what we have to do is rally around Moreno Valley and its activities and athletics. I mean, when there's a performance, we need the performers from the other schools to come support that performance. And we have to figure out a way to do that. Because when students see other students performing, they, that, that's a better language. For our kids, you know, they're, they're involved. And I mentioned it to you, uh, Dr. Roca, and you know, you told me we would put that out to the other schools. But I think we needed a concerted effort to try that. How do, how do we do that? And the best example was that elementary flag football contest. It was packed. But why was it packed? Cause we had all the kids competing. So when we're competing at the high school level, we need all the kids in that activity to, to support that team. And it'll rotate from Canyon to Valley to VDL to MoVal. But that'll build our community. That's what I'd like to see us do.
Thank you kindly.
No, I just wanted to share that uh, Mr. Gili did a wonderful job of kind of br, of sending out a, a message to all of the leaders in the district, inviting them to attend. We had quite a few folks there. Um, also we had the athletic directors from the other schools there as well, showing that support. Some former coaches, coaches from other sites as well. But I think the student piece is the part that we need to kind of do some more work on. You know, it's, it's a tricky balance of being rivals when we need to be rivals, but then being supportive and colleagues and collaborative when we need to be. But I think that's something that we can definitely put Mr. Sterns on to work with the ADs on a strategy to support that endeavor.
And you know, just, just to add to that, uh, it's, it's great to see the adults model the behavior we want to have. And um, you know, I'm gonna use as board member. She showed up, she was on the sideline, she had a Letterman's jacket on. That, that's what I'm talking about, see? And we can get away from the nonsense of rivalry. And I grew up in a, a town where we had two high schools across from each other. Thanksgiving Day, we were rivals, but the rest of the year, we were friends. It can happen. So that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, trustee and Vice President Luna.
I just wanna piggyback off of that, actually. And this is actually, it came up at CSBA when we had a breakout session for the delegate assembly. Um, cost. A lot of students, parents, families can't afford to go to the games. Um, there was a small school district there who said that they, you know, they give everybody tickets. They host it, they allow their families to come free. I don't know, um, if that's something we could offer or whatnot, but nowadays, high school football games are expensive. Two tickets to the, the last game was, was twenty-seven bucks. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, we, we surfaced the conversation around the cost of CIF with Mr. Sterns and the team. They're gonna be bringing that topic up with CIF as, just in general. Um, there's a lot of strategies for that. I know that single high school towns will sometimes do like a booster bus for kids. So they, when at away games, they fill up a couple of buses of kids and they pay for their entrance at the other game and they, you know, transport the kids to the game and then back. So I think that's something we can look at. We need to look at um, the allowability of certain funds to pay for tickets. I'm not sure if that would be a, a gift of public funds, but that's something we could look at with ELOP or maybe some other funds. But we'll do some research and get back to the board on what we can do to increase that. But I agree, cost is prohibitive.
Um, other than costs, um, that is a main issue. I feel like there's ways to get around it as well, because during league, um, it's the teams that put the cost on it. And I feel like there's other ways that. And I feel like there's other ways that they can get money, like fundraising, like the snack bar and other such things. Um, and then another thing that, um, a lot of people don't go to games is specifically at my school, what I've realized is that. Um, students from other schools are not allowed to be on our home side. They have to, they are forced to go to the away side where people from, that aren't from our city are over there. So that's the only, like, restriction that I see at my school specifically, um, that, like, prevents people from. Coming to our games, especially cause my freshman year, um, I remember there was a lot more people in the stands and things like that. And now there's a lot more restrictions and then no-go list as well. So a lot of our students, even from our school, are not allowed to go, even though it has decreased, but there's still, like, those numbers are still there.
So are you saying if you had a friend at Canyon Springs that wanted to come to the game, they couldn't go on your side?
Not come on our side.
Oh, wow, that's pretty restrictive.
That came up in a conversation with, um, trustee Leva and, and researching with our team. I think that was a, something that was implemented several years ago because there was issues with fights in the stands because of the rivalry of the schools. So we need to figure out some way of, of balancing both the safety, because honestly, in some cases, there were pretty rough fights. Uh, because of rivalry and also camaraderie. But again, that's something that we can ask Mr. Sterns to work with the A Ds on, maybe having a section where we have, you know, um, students and, and that. Um, and then the other dynamic is students without their parents, that was a big issue as well. When across, you know, one of the high schools would, the kids would come over without parents, and then, in that case, they can't get into the game at all. Because there's nobody there to supervise them, and we had some issues there, but again, we'll have Mr. Sterns work with the A Ds on what we can do to support that.
Well, maybe that's, you know, that's the answer, if they're like, for a rivalry team, maybe, you know, if they're.
Have their parents.
An adult with them, because, you know, there's a lot of questions from, you know, parents saying, you know, like, okay, you're trying to avoid. Um, for the kids not to get into fights, you know, if they're in the same district. But what if it's the same situation when you go to the other side and you're in the rival side? And that creates, can get great conflict too, you know, the game. So we need to come to a solution, I feel that every student who wants to participate and, 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 and support. Cause we're talking about, you know, kindness, community, and how we're gonna create that, if we're the ones also creating that division.
Absolutely, I, I'm also, just in general, not a fan of creating a district-wide policy. Because a few kids did something wrong, right? We're, we're often guilty of that, you know, little Alex misbehaved, so everybody gets detention. You, that's not generally something that, that we should be doing. Um, I know that at one of the games, we had a family, that parents were there, that actually was denied sitting on the, on the stand. Even though they're from a different school, so even though some of those policies are in place, they're not clear and they're not being followed with consistency across the district. So we just need to make sure we do all of that. Once we have some better, fine-tuned policies and protocols, we'll roll them out to the board so you can have some input on those as well.
You know, a lot of what happens in stadiums has to do with. How it's supervised. And one of the things that I did at football games, I had adults. Every twenty to twenty-five feet with radios at the top of the stands. And so how you supervise your facility, you can control a lot of that nonsense.
I, I one hundred percent agree, we had a perfect example of that at the Valley View game two Fridays ago. Uh, there was a couple of, um, parents from the opposing school that were causing a ruckus on the stand. Our security immediately identified them, had a conversation, and they left willingly.
Um, anyways, I didn't, that was all I wanted to mention, I don't have any other items, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Luna. Um, just to piggyback a little bit off of, um, the conversation around sports, normally I don't. But I can share that, um, I'm very proud of Valley View. And I did notice that they were getting this, this big, you know, kind of parade when they were going off to play their last game. And one of the things I did think of way back in my day, uh, class of ninety-two. And so, um, we, um, we had what we call a spirit bus. Like, I think you kinda mentioned a booster bus, so I actually think that's a really good idea and something we should kinda consider. But this spirit bus way back in my day, it would house the cheerleaders as well as parents. And people who wanted to attend the game at the other school. They would charge, of course cheerleaders were free, but they would charge, again, way back in my day, I don't know what three dollars means in today's dollars. But three dollars to get on that spirit bus, and you had a whole, you brought your spirit team to the game with you so you could have support at the game. So I can't, I really like that idea, and if we can look into that, that would be awesome. Um, I don't have any other future agenda topics, I just wanted my little two cents in that one, so, yay. Dr. Rubacava?
I do have one, um, at the request of the board, which I think is a fabulous idea. Um, is, you know, we, every month, we have our schools come in and share their M T S S data. But we don't always hear what happened as a result of those actions until the following year, when we look at the dashboard. So President Clark, um, and I spoke, and we came up with the idea of doing a presentation towards the end of the school year. Sometime around maybe May, where we can have a report from Ed Services where they're able to share with the board. These are all the actions that each of our schools identified, and this is how they did in implementing those actions. So we've already had a conversation with Ed Services, and now that we've adopted the new calendar for the year, we'll identify one of the meetings where they can come. And report out on what, what are the results of the implementation of the actions. We won't know the impact on scores until the following year, but at least we'll know the implementation of the action, which is an important step in that.
Sounds good, thank you so much. With no further business to come before the Board of Education, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty P M, good evening.
No, no, no clapping just yet, we have two more super quick meetings and then we can clap. That was a happiness interrupter from Dr. Rubacava.
The Board of Education, acting in its official capacity as a legislative body for the School Facilities Corporation, open the meeting at. Eight forty-one P M, roll call, please.
Isabella Carbio, student board member, present.
Joanna Leva, present.
Cleveland Johnson, present.
Rhodes Williams, present.
Sammy Luna, present.
Brandy Clark, present.
Alejandro Rubacava, present.
Esperanza R C, present.
Robert Verdi, present.
Susanna Lopez, present.
Public comments on agenda items, members of the public who wish to make a comment to the authority board are invited to identify themselves. And may present comments at this time. Under the requirements of state law, the authority board cannot take action on items not identified on the agenda and will not make decisions on such matters. Individual speakers shall be allowed to speak for three minutes on any agenda item. The Board of Education shall limit the total time for public input on each agenda item to twenty-one minutes, Board by law ninety-three twenty-three. B, section five, per Board by law ninety-three twenty-three and consistent with state law. Twice the allotted time will be provided to a member of the public utilizing a translator. Ms. Claudia, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
All right, time for action items. Approval of the, of the minutes of the School Facilities Corporation meeting of December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minute that's presented.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, organization of the Board of Directors for twenty twenty-six. Uh, that would be two A election of the president. We're doing this again? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
So for clarity purposes, we do have to stipulate that what we are doing at this time is that we are basically assigning our Board of Education. To the Schools Facilities Corporation as elected officers. So Ms. Clark will be the, uh, president, Ms. Luna will be the vice president, and. Dr. Rubacava will be the secretary, and Susanna Lopez will be the chief financial officer.
But we have to go through item by item, so for two A, it would be, um, motion to approve. Um, Ms. Clark as president, and then go through the voting, and we have to do each one.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion for the election of Ms. Clark as president?
You do. Mr. Johnson.
Oh, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I have Mr. Johnson and Ms. Clark.
And Ms. Clark seconded, and did your, you called for the vote, yeah?
Okay, so call for the vote, Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, and for two B election of Vice President Sammy Luna, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, for Sammy Luna to be elected Vice President of the School Facilities Corporation for two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you, do I have a second? Johnson? Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, and, uh, do I have a motion to appoint Dr. Rubacava as secretary?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, do I have a motion to approve Ms. Lopez as the Chief Financial Officer?
So moved, I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
And item three, meetings of the School Facilities Corporation, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, um, that the meetings for the School Facilities Corporation be called on as needed basis. With public notice given in accordance with section three point zero nine of the corporation bylaws. Which states that all meetings of the Board of Directors shall be called, noticed, hailed, and conducted, subject to the provisions. Of the Ralph M. Brown Act, chapter nine of part one of division two of title five of the government code of the state of California. Being sections five four eight, five zero through five four nine six two thereof.
Thank you, President Clark, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Leva, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, and there being no further business to come before the Board of Directors, acting in its official capacity. As a legislative body for the School Facilities Corporation, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty-six P M.
Thank you.
And we have one more here, District Financing Authority. The Board of Education, acting in its official capacity as a legislative body for the District Financing Authority, open the meeting at. Eight forty-seven P M, roll call, please.
Isabella Carbio, present.
Joanna Leva, present.
Cleveland Johnson, present.
Rhodes Williams, present.
Sammy Luna, present.
Brandy Clark, present.
Alejandro Rubacava, presence.
Esperanza R C, present.
Robert Verdi, present.
Susanna Lopez, present.
Thank you, item B, public comments on agenda items, members of the public who wish to make comment to the authority board are invited to identify themselves. And may present comments at this time, under the requirements of state law, the authority board cannot take action on items not identified on the agenda. And will not make decisions on such matters. Individual speakers shall be allowed to speak for three minutes on any agenda item. The Board of Education shall limit the total time for public input on each agenda item to twenty-one minutes. Board by law ninety-three twenty-three B, section five, per Board by law ninety-three twenty-three and consistent with state law. Twice the allotted time will be provided to a member of the public utilizing a translator, Ms. Claudia, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Thank you, on to action items, C one, approval of the minutes of the District Financing Authority, meeting of December seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson seconds, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva. Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, uh, number two, affirm appointment of authority board and December annual meeting. Do.
Same as before.
Okay, so, um, so we need to affirm appointment of Board of Education president as chair of the authority board. Uh, that would be Ms. Clark, do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, affirm appointment of Sammy Luna for Board of Education Vice President as Vice Chair of the Authority Board, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, affirm the appointment as Vice Chair of Authority Board for Sammy Luna.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Leva, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we need a motion to affirm appointment of Board, Board of Education clerk. To act as Authority Secretary, which would be Dr. Rubacava.
Now, for this one, it would be.
It would be Mr. Williams, which would be Mr. Williams, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion affirming the appointment of Mr. Williams to act as the Authority Secretary.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you, Ms. Leva, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Just clarification, Board Clerk.
Please, thank you for that, let me, ooh, it's. Let me clarify, I'd like to make a motion for the Board of Education clerk. Mr. Williams, affirming the appointment to act as Authority Secretary.
Yes.
Perfect, yes.
And seconded by Ms. Leva?
Yes.
Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, item D, who would this one be? Everyone?
It, the listing is there, so just approve the authority as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to affirm appointment of Authority Board and December annual meeting?
I'd like to make, to make a motion to appoint the Authority Officers as presented and hold the regular annual meetings each year in December.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Ms. Leva.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Will, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries, there being no further business to come before the Board of Education, acting in its official capacity. As a legislative body for the District Financing Authority, the meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-one P M.